All right, we have, Martin is not available this evening and Alex McHenry is participating by phone. So I will start with comments from the public regarding items not on the agenda. And seeing none, I will move to Agenda Item 4, Amendments to the Agenda. Sorry, David, anything?
I do have a couple of those. Hi, Alex, you with us? Okay, I'm gonna put you on speaker and you'll be beside Elizabeth and myself. Okay?
Okay.
Okay, Alex, we're in public session already and we're just on the Amendments to the Agenda section. So if you're on mute and you need to speak, either send a text or just cut in, I'll try to defer to you as appropriate here.
I will, thank you.
Thanks.
So, the only amendment that I have is the Kathy Kay retirement. And you have a letter by your place, that's her, a letter that was sent to me two days ago. Is that right? Two days ago. So I want to add that to the, under Retirement, under the Consent Agenda.
All right. All right, seeing no other amendments, do we have announcements?
I do, I just want to, first of all, say, we had a successful graduation, I brought my reminder here of the program, last Friday, and I want to thank Bridget for, on behalf of the Board, really nice comments to welcome everybody to the ceremony. Again, I think it was a testament of a lot of hard work along the way, including school board members and ensuring the education for our youth as they took their next steps, so I wanted to let you know that and also thank Bridget. In addition, I have a couple of quick announcements. This is the last Board meeting for a couple individuals that are here. John Obbin, who has been with us, and this is Mark's last, probably last, public school board type meeting that he'll be a business manager at. And so, on behalf of the District, John, I want to really thank you for your service. We're a proud district, we have a lot going on, as you have figured out, in our district. But we appreciate your service and wish you the best.
Thank you.
Thank you, John.
Yeah. And then, last but not least, Stuart Weiss, who has been with us a long time in this district in many different capacities, as Assistant Principal for many years, and then, most recently, our Director of Learning. He has been a great asset to the District administrative team. Our administrative team is one that's extremely collaborative and we've been able to get a lot done and we are well, well ahead of many others, thanks to his efforts. So, on behalf of the District, Stuart, I want to thank you very much for your service. And you too, your last school board meeting, although you'll probably watch us on RETN, both of you, and follow us regularly, and come and visit regularly, yeah, so.
You can watch us at your leisure, Stuart.
Yeah, yeah, thank you guys.
Thank you both.
And if I could just make a quick announcement, I just want you to know that, for the last two days, we've had our third annual Curriculum Camp, focusing on Universal Design for Learning, we had over seventy-five teachers, K through 12, who participated. And this is funded by an initial grant from the state and from Title II-A funds for professional development. And has been, I think, widely appreciated by our teachers and really helped them with the District Board. It's great to see people working even when the year is over.
Thank you, Stuart.
Thank you. All right, we'll move on to City and School Collaboration.
So, I don't have a lot there, we have a scheduled meeting, which I haven't connected with you, Elizabeth, whether that's an option for you on Friday still, but that's our next scheduled meeting.
It's this Friday?
Yeah, this Friday, so, well, I've asked for confirmation. So, I'm waiting for confirmation from Kevin before I circle back to you, because it's, anyway, so I expect to hear back from him on that, I asked him again when I talked to him today. So, in that regard, we'll be talking about any kind of pertinent issues that are currently going on, so, thank you.
One, I'm not sure this is the right place to bring this up, but based on the the fact that the governor's veto was not overturned, do we know what the impact is to a potential shutdown on July 1st to any of our operations? I never had asked the question before, but I just wondered if there was anything.
Not that I'm aware of, not that I'm aware of. There could be some grant-related things that might, might impact, but I don't think so. Again, I'm not totally prepared to do, to, haven't, haven't thought that far, it's not that far. But, I'm hopeful that things will get resolved, but we do have, under Superintendent's Report, we have a legislative update in there as well, Education Funding and Special Ed Piece. But, I haven't really thought that through.
Yeah, I just had never asked the question and I wondered if, I didn't think it would, because our budgets are approved locally, but I hadn't asked the question and dispersments.
State employees, so what is there to do?
Right.
That's a big, that would be the implication, getting answers to some of our critical questions around programs.
Availability of state resources.
Yeah, right.
Are there any dispersments that come to us directly from the state over the summer? Like between, you know, say, July 1 and September 1?
Yeah, we get the Special Ed expense reimbursement funds from the last quarter or last third of 2018. I think around August 15 to September 1.
Okay, but would those be monies that were budgeted for fiscal '18?
Yeah, they're budgeted for fiscal '18.
Okay.
But it would affect our cash flow for fiscal '19.
Well, I guess what I'm saying is, I think that the state can still, of course, again, you have the question as to whether financial, finance and management is staffed, but fiscal '18 money can still be sent. It's fiscal '19 money that's not authorized, for lack of an appropriations bill. So, is there any fiscal, I guess, is there money that would become available by virtue of fiscal '19 legislative?
I can't think of any category.
Okay.
I got it here.
All right.
Certainly, your taxes are levied based locally. You don't receive any money from the state to offset that, you send it to the state during the course of the year. So that part is not an issue. Some districts have that, may have that.
All right. Okay.
I'll, I'll check on it.
Roughly when does that, the Special Ed reimbursement come in? Is that like a mid-July, late July?
I think it's the end of August.
Okay, so this would really be a protracted, you know?
It would have to go on for quite a while.
Okay.
I don't think that would be as serious cash flow problem, but if it is, you'll have to be working on that.
Revenue anticipation note, or?
Tax anticipation.
Right, okay.
All right, thank you. All right, we'll move on to Agenda Item 7, the Superintendent's Report.
So the first item for me is the tuition. North here, Isle of Monte, Grand Isle, 7th grade, primarily 7th grade. So this is a result of the islands, who we currently receive tuition, monies for high school, 9 through 12. Under the Act 46 merger, for them, they, not next year, but the following year, will have choice for middle school. So, the request came to us from the islands, that would we consider the opportunity to receive 7th graders next year, prior to the Act 46 transition occurring, for the reasons of minimizing the number of transitions. Because under the current practice, a 7th grader would go to one of their, their school, but would be, so then the transition would be, they would come then here, right, for 8th grade, and then make another transition to the high school. So the request was made, would we consider receiving tuition, or allowing them to be tuitioned to our middle school, that agreement for one year, to limit, to limit those transitions for those students who wanted to do that. So, currently, there's agreements that are in play between Colchester, Essex, and us. And we have worked together to get kind of legal advice, and I think all three of us are in the same place, requesting to the, to our respective Boards, the desire to do that. So what I, again, I haven't, this is, I think, needs to be discussed further, but this is some correspondence from our legal counsel. I'm sorry, Alex, I didn't get this to you. And then there's some specific agreement language in here as well. Yeah, I do, John, you have, I have another one. Sorry, I'm not doing a good job with my moving things around here.
Is it?
Yes, Alex?
Yeah, not being able to read it right now, is there anything in the, what our counsel said, that said we can't do it, or shouldn't do it?
Yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna talk about it right now, so the, so, in the body of the email, again, you have some information specific to what the motion would be, if you would entertain that. And then, more importantly, in the agreement, what this means is that it's under the control of the Island Board to seek the recommendation from the parent and make the recommendation to us. We would then have an agreement, of a tuition agreement, that would allow this for that period of time. The tuition amount for this period of time would be based, is in the $4,000 range. We think that it'd be very few numbers of students. And again, there's language in, in the agreement that I passed out around payment terms that would allow us to also make sure that we could collect those funds. So let me just pause, there, there are cited, under Item 2 of the, of the agreement, it talks specifically about, under the 16 VSA, 824, B2, and 27D, which basically allows for that tuition agreement to happen, as I so stated. So let me, let me pause there.
Can you clarify, David, when you say minimize transitions for students, can you clarify what would happen typically without this agreement?
Right, so, under this agreement, a student, or students, would, would be allowed to come to their, to 7th grade here?
Well, what, I mean, I'm trying to figure out what's going on in the islands that?
Right, so they, they're gonna shut down their middle school, under the Act 46 merger.
Which grades are they losing?
It's gonna be 7th and 8th.
So they're losing 7th and 8th grade?
Right, which would be the following year, not this coming school year, the following school year. So FY '20. So, under their current situation, under the merger, they'll have students that will go 7th grade, then they'll have to transition to 8th grade here, and then they'll have to transition to high school. Where, it could be South Burlington, wherever they so choose.
Could be other schools, so.
That's right, that's right.
So, based on their choice, they could have another transition.
That's right. And so, the, the request is, is would we entertain the opportunity for those that are concerned, have concerns about the transition, would we entertain welcoming them a year early? For those that maybe transitions are harder for them. They would come here for their 7th grade and their 8th grade year, and then they make the normal transition to our 9th grade, as all of our students do. So that's the request. You know, I'm in favor of, of this, I think it's a small scale. I think this probably should have been a provision under Act 46 merger language, where these types of transitions are happening, to try to limit the, you know, the transitions for students. But again, I haven't spent a ton of time out in the Act 46 merger world. And again, this is a request that's coming to us from, from the islands, and we have collaborated with Colchester Superintendent, Essex Westford Superintendent as well. We're all in agreement to move this. We think the exposure's small, it would be for one year.
Approximately how many students?
Well, the total exposure would be, for the 7th grade, is around 21, that's their total class. So, we don't, and we, and again, that's, we don't think that would all be the case, we don't think they'd all come here. So the exposure is, again, I don't know what that would be. The tuition amount, obviously, is significant to their budgeted amount, right? To their budgeted available funds, if all 21 came. So, this is certainly an out-of-the-ordinary type of request.
I'm confused about what you mean by, so how would the tuition work? So, they would be paying us additional tuition on top of what was?
They would be paying us the $4,000 for tuition, not our announced tuition rate. This would be an exception to our announced tuition rate.
So, when you're saying it would be impactful to their budget, they would have to be paying the regular, taxpayers basically paying the regular tuition, or the regular school budget, plus then they're paying the additional $4,000 to us.
Right, because they have to run all those programs still, in the islands, under the, because their merger won't take effect until the following year.
Right, okay.
So they did not budget for funds to tuition that population of students anywhere.
But, but there's a tax advantage with Act 46.
There will be, in the following year, where there's a, there's a stepped percent incentive.
And where do we stand in terms of capacity at the middle school? I mean, is this something that, you know, 7 to 21 students could be absorbed easily, or would we, there would be, would there be capacity?
21 would be high.
Yeah.
You know, in that 5 to 6 is fine.
Yeah. And what about, would the plan be to bus them with the high school students?
They would come with our, with our current already, so again, there's an operational expense. We do have capacity with our buses, so, that doesn't mean that, you know, I mean, there's, there's cost incurred. I am not trying to, you know, negate that. But, we also think that it's an important component for kids in their succession of education, where those that will likely choose to come to us in 7th grade will likely stay with us, probably throughout the programming. So, anyway.
Does, does the 4,000 cover our costs?
The 4,000, I would say, I mean, we did not do a cost benefit analysis on this at all. I think it's a, it's an amount that was viewed upon it, that both the islands could afford and that would be an acceptable amount to support this, this particular one-year-only transition.
And is that, is that recommended tuition being, is it consistent across any of the receiving?
That's correct.
Okay.
Yeah, and we felt that that was important collectively amongst the three of us, not to be having different, different amounts.
There's an increment of 12 students in our demographic study, is this in part the anticipation of some more students coming in?
That's correct, and, well, that's, it's, the demographic data is not in there, is not specific to this proposal. That was done only with the understanding of the demographic students, the number of students that would come to us from the islands for the, you know, for the 2020 year, right? FY '20 year.
Okay, so.
Because that's when, so there's an uptick as a result of the actual closure.
The actual closure, okay.
That was taken into account by McGibbons' report, based on the conditions that we knew.
So the net effect is, you know, here we had 569, so there are 500, sorry, I'm wrestling with collapsing near-term vision here, near-field vision, so I think it's 555 in the current year, and you're looking at 569 next year, which concludes eight transfer students. These folks would be in addition to the eight.
That's correct.
Okay, but it would, each five of them would represent a percent, five or six of them would be a 1% increase, so, okay. How timely is this?
It's pretty, I mean, you could, you could wait and put it on to the, the July 11 meeting. Again, you know, from the email, you see I got some of this, we've been working on trying to get it. It's not just us, we're trying to be really consistent across three, so that we're not, you know, this, this looks consistent. I don't know where the, where Colchester or Essex is with their adoption. I would like to be able to give their Board this opportunity and flexibility. Maybe they'll get no one that will come through between now or after the July 11 meeting, I don't know.
I mean, I'll just give you, I'm favorably disposed to it, and it does look like there were some fill-in-the-blanks here that perhaps, you know, could be populated, so if it's not, if it's not gonna put you in a tough spot vis-à-vis everybody else, could we do July 11, maybe just, you know, get some sense of the incremental cost? And I'm not saying, okay, 4,000 represents a couple hundred dollar per student loss, I don't think that's a deal breaker, but just a sense of that.
Yep.
And, and also, you know, is 21 students the upper bound that we're talking about?
Well, there's, there's a little complexity, because we did get a request then for some of the 8th grade. I think if you have, if you've heard anything from the islands, there's then some folks that are saying, if it's for 7th, why can't it be for 8th? So, I'm feeling a little bit, and that's nothing that their Board particularly has insinuated, it's a result of the conversation that has then also emerged from those that are in 8th grade. And if you're gonna do it for the 7th, could you do it for the 8th? So, I think putting a pause is fine, unless, you know, better understand where things are with.
Literally, if going to the next meeting isn't gonna kill thing, you know, isn't going to unnecessarily pressure the negotiations, and if we could just get a sense as to what the incremental cost is, and maybe kick the chair a little bit as to what the upside risk is. Again, I think, you know, more students is great, but if we were to absorb, you know, a large number of students, would that be okay relative to the, you know, McGibbons' study, which was forecasting 569, and let's say it's 20 or 25 more than that?
Yeah, I would want, I would want to understand a little bit more on the cost-benefit side, because that amount is substantially lower than our announced tuition. But, there's, there, I'm sure there's up to a point where infrastructure can accommodate some number of students. And beyond that, then there might be a subsidized expense. I know when we did the bus arrangement with Winuski, that was easier to do, because the District was not subsidizing that at all. It was, it was basically at cost. And it would be nice to be able to assure people of that. I think you've got an opportunity to assess the 8th grade component. The, the piece I usually hear about when we get into these discussions is where you have siblings, and there's a situation where it's just easier for families.
Right. I put them both on the same bus, absolutely.
Yeah, and, and I guess the other component would be, it would be nice for planning purposes to have some kind of a commitment, that those students would go on to the high school, so that we could better plan for capacity and so forth there. I don't know if that's possible, but it would be nice to have an understanding of that at a minimum.
Okay, that's good.
Any other questions?
David, it would be helpful for you to have a sense of the Board, just in your discussions with the other folks. You know, I'm perfectly happy to say, my inclination is to be in support of this, I just think it's, if we can take some time and get a little bit more substantiation.
If you get some additional information, it sounds like that you, you may be interested in entertaining that. Can you turn that down just a little bit?
Any questions or comments from the public on this topic? All right, seeing none, it sounds like there's some follow-ups there.
So, moving on, still on the Superintendent's Report, Legislative Update. I was hoping, when this, when we put this together before, that we would maybe have some different, different outcomes, but those of you who've been probably listening to the news more than me know that there's, there was a veto action that took place, that we still do not have a budget. Obviously, talking about what Elizabeth brought up earlier around the cost.
Looks like she brought it up here, yeah.
Yeah, it's fine, but, you know, I don't really know, I know that they're gonna go back to the table and currently working on a potential resolution, but obviously, it has a lot of us concerned. I would say more of the concern is long-term planning. When we talk about, you know, strategic development and collaboration and programming, you know, these types of things around funding prediction models are hard for us, so, no word at this present time. The special education law and the current grant funding, John, do you know, can you give an update on, on where we are with that at all? Also.
The only numbers I've really seen have been better than what we talked about at Budget Time in terms of the yield and the tax rate information. But all of that can go out of the window with, with whatever they come up with.
So they're directly tied, and that's part of the, I think, part of the package. I don't know if they'll, you know, separate certain things and trying to get, I think you heard some of that movement. But really, I don't, I don't have any great specific details, Stuart, I don't think, I'm not wanting to miss you either on some of the things that are coming out of the state, but we're question marks on both of those, so I was hoping we could have something a little more specific for you, but I don't.
Okay.
On that note, yeah, same thing on the Special Ed. We, again, we had no knowledge how that overlays, underlays, supports either, we're.
Well, that passed, correct?
It, it passed, but the, the process of the census model, how that's gonna be rolled out, we're still trying to figure that out.
Is that, is that contingent on the budget passing?
Well, we, we think so. We think that there's implications pretty specific to the Special Ed component if we don't get the education funding component, so.
I, I thought that had passed and it was independent vis-à-vis the block grants.
It has passed, but we're still, we're still, I think, it's very much tied, right? Our programming is tied to all of our services. And again, this is moving back from, from our previous, you know, special education-driven report to a census model. So we're gonna, we're gonna get kind of the block grant dollar, and we'll be changing.
I mean, at the moment, in the IDA grant, which is a Special Ed grant, I know that it's populated about 90% of what, and that's true for the other federal grants besides, so that, I think, is just what the state is doing at the moment. And I don't think there's a significant change right now from last year's funding for FY '19. So, how that will play out long-term, I don't know, but in terms of the money that we're working on putting together now, or Joanne is, it's not, it's not particularly different.
Was it about the money or the mechanism? Because I thought it was.
Well, it's the mechanism, but that's what they use to figure out what the, what, how much they're going to put in the allotment.
Oh, in the block grant, okay.
Yeah. But remember, I mean, it's important to know that, yes, they're, they're different funding sources, but they all work together to support students. And if there's significant reduction in Ed funding formula predictions, then it's obviously gonna have an effect on how we support, you know, programs. Doesn't mean we'd get less of the special education funding, but we would have to have some, we'd have to figure out how we provide a program. It would be pretty significant, pretty significant.
Do, do we have to do anything fundamentally different to implement, I'm calling it the block grant, because that's the best description I have of it, the legislation that did pass, the way the funding is allocated more locally? Do, do we have to do anything different?
Yes, we do have to do it different, and I'm not fully versed, Joanne Godak would be the best. Stuart obviously has a little bit of experience, but, you know, what we know is that, in the past, we had to make specific predictions about what we would be spending for special education, based on our caseloads. And you would be allotted money based on that, what you put forward in your, in your report, in your funding needs. If that significantly changed because of demographic change, in student in-migration or out-migration, you know, you had to continue to shore that up all the time. The block grant, basically, is an amount of money that allows you to serve the students that you need. And then there's a, you know, a, you know, a mechanism that you can either draw more or, or give back. We've gone through that in the past, the joint Godak, John, you know, Stuart, and we've been part of, you know, that, that system in the past. I don't know how many years ago that was, but a good number of years ago, where we used to be on a block grant. So, again, there's question marks here, similar to the, the whole education funding model that we're just gonna have to pay attention to. But I think we feel pretty comfortable with a block grant movement, you know, we feel like that's a good move. But it really does need to be in harmony with the Ed funding model.
All right, any other questions? All right, any other questions or comments?
Not giving much for information, unfortunately.
You're trying to make John and, and Stuart's last meeting a little shorter, I think.
Yeah.
All right, we'll move on to agenda item eight. Um, this is consider a side letter of agreement for the, uh, support staff collective bargaining agreement. And this was warned for potential action, but it is, will not be acted on. Maybe I can give a brief overview and you can add to it, Bridgette. Um, the, we gave an update at a previous board meeting about the transition, kind of mid-year after the third-party administrator for, um, our healthcare benefits decided to exit the business. There was a transition that's going on from the prior vendor to a new vendor. That transition occurred effective May first, I believe. And, uh, this negotiating subcommittee with the support staff that included Bridgette and Martin was approached to look at the, um, arrangement, uh, or the impact on the administration of prescription benefits specifically as it related to both the structure of the, um, healthcare agreement and then specific to prescription reimbursement, correct?
That's correct, yeah.
So there, we had warned this for potential action because that subcommittee has had some conversation. But at this point, um, there is not an agreement for the board to respond to. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Yeah, do you want to add anything to that, or?
Nope, just that we're continuing to talk, uh, with the ESPU. Um, and we need to schedule another meeting with them. So it's, it's in our court to schedule another meeting to further the discussion.
Okay. And David, did you have anything, or? All right, any questions or comments from the public? All right, seeing none, we will move on to agenda item nine, master planning and visioning discussion. Do I need to get my binder, by the way?
Um, you can get your binder. Um, I'm gonna ask John Stewart to come on up over here, John, and join us.
Excuse me a minute.
Yeah, I could have put it right. Let me just pause, let you get the, get the books. Also, for folks that are in the audience, if you wanna, there are books that we are kind of keeping up to date and loaning out for the meeting. We're collecting them back at the end of each meeting, but, um. So two, two, um, there's two, uh, topics here. The first one is the update on the status of the sound insulation at Chamberlain. And I am not always consistent with either sound insulation or soundproofing. So those two are synonymous. It's really s- soundproofing, uh, the school. And the other is committee work update, which we're gonna do as well. So on the first, um, bullet point, I do want to update the board that today, at three-thirty at the Chamberlain School, myself, Bart Maselli, and John Stewart, who's been working with me on master planning, met with three individuals, uh, from the Jones Payne Group, who are the consultants around the, um, noise study, um, work that the airport has been supporting. Uh, they were supported and, um, I think approved by the airport, um, Gene Richards and Nick Lugo to do so. Uh, they met with us specific to understanding, um, number of rooms, mapping of the location, uh, so that they can begin to do sound testing. Their sound testing is a little different than ours. And currently, we've set the week of August thirteenth to do sound testing at the Chamberlain School. The way they do the sound testing is set up, you know, I'm gonna just say, a loudspeaker outside. And they measure, they, they project a certain amount of, um, volume. And they measure the differential to the inside space. They'll also, from what we understand today, do it also from the roof location because a, are a lot of the, the roof location, the roof structure above in the Chamberlain School doesn't have any suspended ceiling or anything like that. So they'll be doing it both ways and capturing, um, the differential from what's being projected outside to what's being measured inside. So that will then, again, based on the outcome of that, uh, we'll walk into the eligibility component of whether or not we get the grant with the understanding, if that's approved, then we would be in the, in the, um, timeline to be able to get that done, um, for the, for the following summer. Maybe some work could happen during this, during the school year. But the majority of the work, don't, I don't actually know all of what it entail, but it's, they're looking, you're talking about windows, doors, maybe ceiling insulation, maybe air-conditioned locations, et cetera. I don't want to make promises to what that would actually be, but that's kind of what we're hearing. Remember that in nineteen ninety-five, we did some additions to the three elementary schools. Those may be in better shape, you know, um, that might not need it. But we were, um, I mean, I, I'm pleasantly, you know, happy with the, the, the movement that's currently going on at the present time, um, based on our advocacy to qualify for the, the noise mitigation, uh, work that we think dates way back to two thousand and fifteen.
Was, um, it, did we share the study that we recently completed with the school?
That was part of the conversation. We, I did bring it up and say that it was available online. Happy to send you the copy. They took note of that. I think they, they knew that we were, we had done the testing. And a lot of, uh, some of our conversation, we did say that some of the, that the data mirrored and supported the FEIS, um, contour lines as well. Um, so I think they will use that, um, to what extent.
But they're still gonna do their own study.
But they're still gonna do their own, that's right.
Well, I, I mean, I assume they're gonna look at the effectiveness of noise remediation methodology. However, um, is the, is there anything negotiable in the August thirteenth date, given that summer is the best time to do this?
I think right now, they have to go out with this, um, you know, this, this, um, approval process. I mean, it seems to be there's specific things that they have to do now, uh, to get to that. I think that's probably the earliest possible time that they could begin doing that. I don't know, John, if you have a different view of that. But I think we, we, that was the earliest and they didn't, that they came up with it. We said, we will make that work, you know, we'll make that work. They probably need four days, maybe five days to do the testing. Essentially, it's going room to room, moving their equipment, also doing things from the ceiling to measure that. They did conclude one thing that was important to us, and that was validating this FICON number, right? We've heard the VOSHA, uh, standard levels, we were underneath. But you heard in the report that we were, um, above the FICON number of the forty-five, um, decibel level. And so they acknowledged that they, anything above the forty-five would, would be, um, in the approval for noise mitigation. And so, and that, I think, validated the FICON numbers. They did mention specifically that the number would be based on the forty-five DNL. So basically, they take the contour that the school's currently in. There's a formula for that, for this, the contour that you're in. And then they plug in this other data to come up with what we would say that DNL demarcation. So, um, anyway, I don't know, anything else that you, you had as takeaways, John?
It would have to go through a federal RFP process to get the contractor. So that's, uh.
Specific to mediation?
Specifically to get, get these contractors onsite. They have, uh.
Yes, to do, to do the work.
Oh, to do the noise compo-, okay. I, I thought this was the group that did it.
No, this is their consulting firm that's, you know, that's currently working with the airport, that also has an affiliation with the FAA. Again, I'm not exactly sure affiliation, you know, hired, I, I'm not, I'm not exactly sure. But they are the, they are, I think, the agent that will.
So, so you're saying, John, that the lead time of almost two months is due to the RFP process?
No, the lead time is essentially because their consultant, their acoustical consultant that we heard about, we, is available then. And we have school programs going on, schools out summer programs until then. So this is a week that's shut down week. It's good for both.
They, they actually threw that date out to us. And they indicated they could go late, you know, they could go later. But we're, we're trying to say the sooner the, the better.
And I, I was jumping ahead and thinking about the actual work that could be done, so, gotcha.
Yeah, so I think, you know, this summer, for, as far as work getting done, the work that would be done would be the, the sound testing. Obviously communicating, any, any sort of, uh, filing work, any preparation that would need to be done. We, we did say that if there was some things that, if everything was approved, there could be some opportunities to do some work, maybe over some of the, the break areas. You know, but again, the, the break areas may be not long enough. But some things could get done perhaps, if they were able to.
We asked them specifically about the mitigation of hazardous materials, uh, asbestos and PCBs. And that would be, all be covered by the grant. There'd be no local charge for that, is what they indicated. So that was, that was really good news.
Fair amount of exchange of information, you know, a map of the school, um, asbestos abatement information that we know of, right? We have kept, we've kept track of that. Um, so, uh, floor tiles, roofs, you know, things like that, if they have to cut up through, you know, anything that we would have. But that's also part of the preparation that would need to be done to make sure that, that we're ready for that. So that's an update on, um, on that particular piece. Again, I had it on there. It was, this was a call actually that Delina got last week, you know, that they wanted to, you know, be, be present. So again, they, uh, it was a positive information.
No, let me just check, any other board comments or questions? Kathy?
I'm wondering, David, if, if, um, there ends up being, if there ends up being, um, new, new windows or something being done with the windows. I wonder if that would maybe take care of the ongoing problem with those windows not being very safe? Like, I have to climb up on a counter to open them?
Yeah.
Probably not a good idea, you know?
Yeah, I think, you know, this kind of wanders into master planning a little bit. But obviously, um, we, we may have some say in, in the, in the window, uh, purchase, but probably not a lot. I mean, what they're looking at primarily is it needs to be a functional window. Functional window means it needs to be able to open and close. There need, it needs to comply with, I would say, appropriate safety requirements for schools. And I think most importantly, it needs to comply with sound, the sound mitigation, uh, measure. Uh, obviously, I think, you know, a- areas where there, there are affected and their windows are, I think it walks into the, you know, the, um, air conditioning component, right? And so y- you can put all the windows on, but if you need to open the windows to cool the temperature on some of our shoulder components of our year, then the only way to really officially mitigate that is to, to do, um, air conditioning. And they were, they were questioning all of our exterior rooms, um, whether they were air-conditioned or not. And most of those, of course, are not. Only certain areas, library, some of the offices. I'm not exactly sure all of the spaces Kathy knows. But the, again, there's, there are some places, but it would likely result in having to neutralize that by, you know, all windows need to stay closed, uh, to help that location.
One of the things that I remember you talking about when you were talking about building a one big new elementary school was the safety, given the concerns that we all now have about school safety that we didn't have when our schools were built. And so it seems to me like those windows are a prime example of what you're saying is a current problem. They're large enough for an adult to walk through, you know? And so it would seem like if, if we get to the point of replacing windows for, for sound mitigation purpose, that we could change the size or, you know, change the way they operate, which is.
Certainly, that's certainly a component, but again, I don't, I don't want to get too far ahead. I mean, when they come back with, um, some choices and options, one of the components that we've identified that we're gonna talk about next in master planning is safety and security. And height of the windows, um, accessibility, all kinds of factors, right? Um, that enter into, we'll, we'll also, um, be talking with them about. Again, my guess would be, and I'm not, that's not my job, but my guess would be is if you can, um, lessen the amount of glass and go with a different structure, i.e. what's currently there is brick on the outside. You know, if it could be more brick, less window, then that helps obviously to mitigate sound. Um, I want to be careful that, I don't want any, I want wind, we want windows, but at the height of the window, the size of the windows, that may be open for some conversation with us, um, to do that.
And with the week of the thirteenth, would it be certain that the Jets are using their afterburners that week?
Yep, so let me, let me be clear about that. What we did on our own independent testing ATC, which is currently, um, available, and we shared this, um, with the board and community a couple sessions ago, that was done actual time. So we took all commercial flights, all, um, the airguard flights. And those were, that was a, that was a sound assessment, baseline assessment that we did based on those three days of operations, and we recorded that. What they're going to be doing is actually very different than that. They may have outside activity going on, but that's not really what they're looking at. They're looking at the transfer of sound by putting a big, big speaker up on a tripod just outside that particular classroom window and putting it to a certain decibel and having sound equipment inside to see, they're gonna, I don't, they're gonna project so many decibels here and they're gonna see what, what the measurement is here. They're looking for something that's below forty-five. Or if it's above forty-five, it qualifies. If it's below, it doesn't qualify. Um, and that's really what they're looking at, that differential measurement. And, um, although we did ask about, is it gonna be a, you know, a deter, you know, a distraction to our community, neighbors, should we be? And I said, really, it's, it's, it's not, it's not like that, you know? I don't want this big whatever sound going off and people really worried about what's happening. So they, they've done this a lot. This is part of, as John said, what they need to do to seek, uh, the federal grant requirement. It's part of their very specific process.
And I think, Kathy, I'm, I'm, this is not really a specific answer to your question on the windows, but a lot of what I've heard on past construction projects are that, um, until you disturb part of the structure, it, it's grandfathered. But for instance, with the floors, I know, once, um, it, uh, once they're disturbed, then you have to get into like asbestos mediation, for instance. So the same may apply with windows, not the security component of necessarily. But, um, if, if the structure's disturbed, then you may, might have to comply with current, um, specifications.
Yeah. So like hazardous ways, anything, it, once we get the scope of the work that their grant would cover, they're gonna want to know that we have to put a hazardous material list together, right? So you're gonna, you're gonna touch that wall, that door, that window, that glazing, you know, and that all has to get tested and assessed. And if it's, if it has any asbestos in, then we have to abate it appropriately. And again, the grant, as John said, would cover that. Similar to those of you around when we did the high school, we wanted to do the high school windows. Um, and that was on track, but we did a, we had to do a hazardous assess, waste assessment. And lo and behold, it came back that we had small traces of PCB in the, in the glazing. That then cut our, you know, we, we obviously couldn't do the whole project in one year because of that expense. So that would all have to happen.
Any other questions or comments on this part of the report?
Okay.
All right, thanks.
So moving on to, uh, the second bullet, that's the committee update. And by your place, board members, um, which you can put in your book if you so choose, or, um, you, or we'll do that for you. But the two things, um, the one is the cover page, which is just an update. And then, um, we're gonna spend some time on what's our executive summary. I want to walk you through, we're gonna spend some time talking about the executive summary. It's a three-pager, and it will go under tab nine of your, of your book. And then we're gonna circle back, uh, following that to tab three, pages thirty-three, which is the threshold, threshold analysis, just for people who want to follow along. I'm gonna walk you through, uh, some of this, and I'm really, I'm open to questions along the way, Elizabeth, uh, board members. And then when we do the threshold analysis, both John and I are gonna walk, walk you through some of the, some of the added rationale and reasons for the, for the, um, the scoring that we provided. So, um, task one, again, this is specific to the charge that was directed by the board, um, some time ago. And task one, number one A, was identify the specific needs for upgrades at the high school and middle school by June thirty, two thousand and eighteen. A quick update is that the Door Whittier Architect Firm, uh, did complete the facility assessment at both the high school and the middle school. And they did that on April twenty-fourth. And it can be found again in your tabs seven and eight of the, of your binder. And the outputs of that consist of some document, documented conditions of both external, external and physical assessments. And those, again, are highlighted in, under section, um, tab eight, C and D of the master planning. In addition to that, the identification of potential suggested capital improvement, improvements that are needed has also been provided in that section. has also been provided in that section, and we'll continue to refer back to some of these particular components as we move through the report. Capital improvements in the details are also provided in section E. The architect firm, as you know, came, Door Whittier, that's the firm, Rob Fitzjoe came and presented to the board on April eighteenth and provided some of those specifics. If you remember, some of the slides around some of the areas that needed to be addressed, et cetera, were in there, and they're also in tab seven. Section E or items E, total estimated cost of all projects identified were thirty-one million dollars between the two schools. The list of projects with high priority, which referenced in category one, which should be completed by the end of the two years, represents a three-point-seven million dollar expenditure at the middle school and a five-hundred-and-fifty-eight thousand dollar that are both referenced in tab eight, pages one, E one, respectively. So let me just pause there a little bit. This is specific to the needs upgrade that Door Whittier did and kind of where we are today. I don't know if I have any, and John, anything to add to, and I'm kind of going fast here, but questions? Yep?
Well, these are things we've been through before in detail, so we wanted, this summary gives you the map to go back to the book to find specifics. That's one of the main purposes of the summary.
Yeah, we don't think a lot of this is, this is not a surprise. You know, these are things that have been documented that, again, kind of give conclusiveness to the the evidence that fills the book, right? That provides the evidence of doing the deeper dive on the architect, the electrical, mechanical and structural component, and the list that now emerges that informs our work ahead. But Bridget?
My question, I guess, is, we've obviously, we've talked about the Door and Whittier report. I, I'm struggling with whether this actually fulfills what the resolution was, the board resolution for what was expected by June thirty. And I know that we've planned it this way because we had a certain amount of money in the budget and this was, there was only this phase. But in my mind, when we passed this resolution, that was, the resolution for the needs for upgrades at the high school and middle school were also the educational piece. It was also what we wanted for the delivery of education. It wasn't just what we needed to maintain those buildings, which is basically what Door and Whittier told us. We're calling them capital improvements, but they're capital improvements really to make sure the buildings keep functioning as they are right now. They're nothing to address the concerns that NIASK has raised or that faculty have raised, you know, in terms of what we need to move curriculum forward. And so my question, I guess, is really for the board, whether we need to have a different resolution or sort of say, you know, or move this date forward again. I'm just getting a little bit concerned that we're sort of moving past this and saying, okay, we've checked that resolution or that part of the resolution off because we've done the Door and Whittier report, and there's gonna be some more work. But I just want to make sure that there's a timeline that we're following for that next part of work because that is a big piece. And if we don't start getting organized soon, we're gonna miss next year's budget. And then we're gonna be another year out before we even really get any kind of work started on it. And that's my concern about.
So let me, let me
Can I ask a quick question? In the original resolution, was there specificity, I mean, I know this, but it wasn't limited to this statement here? Task one, was it?
I think the resolutions are in here, aren't they, aren't they David? They're in here someplace, section two.
Just check those really quick.
Yeah.
So while you're doing that, remember, we set the resolutions, you set the resolutions prior to entering into budget constraint.
Well, that's my question. I just sort of
And so we entered into budget constraint.
The resolution does have the educational component to it.
Right.
So, but the budget restraint issue, when we retooled that, we kept the structural, mechanical, electrical work in, and we have successfully passed in the budget for this year, the educational review.
Okay. And I, yes.
So I'm only talking about a half of that, really.
And I had forgotten that that is one of the ones that we had already rescheduled. So we already had pushed that date out to April thirtieth, two thousand and nineteen. It says, and here we had rescheduled that in a different meeting.
That's right.
There were two of them, and I couldn't remember which one it was, but that is one that, yeah, okay, sorry.
So part of this next then, the next steps in the evaluation of, you know, of the two schools.
Sorry, can I?
Yeah, no problem.
I wanted to ask about E. Is E phrased correctly? Because it says
E dash one dash one.
Between the two schools, and then it says, completed by the end of the years is three point, two years, is three-point-seven million for the middle school and five-hundred-and-fifty-eight thousand. Should it be the high school or is the?
Yeah, it should just, you can just put high school after that.
Okay.
Yeah, on the brackets there, yeah. Because it refers to both, both, John, is that right? So you can go to tab eight.
Yeah, it's actually, the costs are on E one, two.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes. Yeah, sorry, it's the same. That's that big, thick document, but thank you. So this lower half of this page talks specifically about what are we gonna do to assess the educational component? And so, again, we're talking about reviewing the project category one items and making sure that we have, you know, the secure funding to make sure that those happen. We have some specific dates in there that we obviously need to pay attention to, to review the funding levels of our facilities, staff. This is an important component. As we start to load on doing additional work, I have to be conscious of how we're gonna do our due diligence to oversee it. And the clerk of the works would be something that I'd like to see embedded in our budget so that we have, you know, just are protecting our benefits without taxing our current staff to do that and expertise as well. Coordinate, D, coordinate with the city regarding projecting needs based on bonding, which we've talked about before. Getting a bonding plan together, understanding what they're doing, what we're proposing to do, or what we're not able to do because of that will be an important component. So that's kind of rounds out that particular component. Going to the next page, page two. This is where we get into the specifics of how to gain the educational information. Again, what we're looking at is what structures would continue to support educational instruction in the best possible way. And so the second part of this would result, it's already in our budget, as I said. We have the four architect firms that submitted for phase one slash phase two. So we're asking that that be re-interviewed, and we go back out and make sure that we get the firm that can best support us to do the phase two part. We'd like to start that process as soon as possible, again, July of eighteen. And we would like to bring that group together throughout the early part of the year so that we would be able to get information back by December first in order to inform our FY twenty budget. If we don't do that, then you can understand the cycle that we're in, we're out of it, right? So there's a fair amount of work that needs to go to get that done, both by some board direction, board participation, and other school slash community representatives to go off and do that due diligence to ensure, what are we looking for to continue and enhance instructional methodology in the classroom?
I know, David, this has come up before, but I really do struggle with the architectural firm being the right resource to assess the educational value of upgrades.
I mean, I understand your concern. What I would say to you is that this is why due diligence about doing the interviewing with them and having some conversation with them around their expertise specific to educational visioning.
Yeah, and I've raised this concern multiple times in our subcommittee meetings too. But having somebody there to ask the right questions of these four firms still doesn't address the concern that it might be appropriate to have someone else who's not potentially, you know, involved in later phases of actually doing some of the work that we're envisioning. I'm just worried about, I've been worried for a long time about potential conflict of interest or whether they're, they may be good, but if we don't broaden that RFP process to include people who are not necessarily architects, I just worry that we may be missing the right resource to do it. I'm a little concerned about time because we're, and I understand we've kind of pushed it out at this stage to this point in the year. It is hard to sort of invite other people into that process, get that process done, and then have that group collectively organized, you know, community members, faculty, administrators, and get that group together, get all that work done. And I mean, December one is late to have recommendations to go into the budget, frankly. I mean, at that stage, we're pretty far along in the budgeting process in terms of what we're looking at. So, yeah, I
I don't disagree that the timeline's tight, but I feel like there's, I mean, maybe I have some wiggle room a little bit later in December, a little bit earlier, but bottom line is, you know, I think it's an appropriate next step that needs to be activated. What I would say, first of all, to the response that, you know, first of all, these all have to be put out to bid, you know? And bid specifications, we can, we probably should relook at what we specifically asked for. And we can go back to those four that said that. And again, there can be, there can be interviewing of that particular group. It's, I mean, I don't wanna, it's not dissimilar to other professions where, you know, if you are the if you are the individuals that construct or do this work, there's a fair amount of experience that they have and what I would say, history of success upon their portfolio that they've done this, right? So I think, I would just say there would be some good questions that could be asked, like what experience do you have specific to how you go about designing a space that supports, you know, instructional methodology that's, you know, the best?
Well, my concern is less about the design. I have complete confidence in these four architects based on their portfolios and their past work to design the space. There's just a deep discomfort for me about having an architect drive conversations about what we want as a community in terms of educational outcomes, because that's really where things should flow. It shouldn't flow from here are your options in terms of what design could look like. Now pick and choose between these options. It really should be, what are we missing? And what do we want to have in the future? Like what does the future look like? And have that discussion of the educational outcomes flow down into, okay, then what spaces do we need to support that? As opposed to the other way around. I just feel like this has been a concern of mine even before I came on the board in the last process, this discussion of spaces first, and wouldn't this be great and wouldn't that be really exciting? It would be, but is that, are we really thinking holistically about the curriculum and about where we're going in terms of learning?
My hope would be is that we, and I don't disagree, if we can find somebody of great expertise to facilitate the conversation, that then drives, you know, drives the request, right?
Right.
So it's the instructional outcomes that we're looking for, right? And if we can have the right people that can do that view based on that particular practice, then that feeds the architect to do what we've asked them to do for the design, to have an instructional space that's gonna meet that need. So maybe it's, do you think it could be, I'm just gonna say, a consultant that works with our group who has high level of expertise in doing this particular work, you know, for education?
I mean, essentially, it's visioning work. It's not really, you know, design work necessarily. It's visioning for what we want at the high school and middle school level. And I know people get uncomfortable with that word because, you know, because it sounds very much like consultants and, you know, are they adding value and what are they bringing to the table? But I just feel like we're struggling a little bit to sort of say to the architects, this is really what we want. And how do we get from where we are now to really giving them a clear picture of what we hope?
So my desire in this is that a committee of individuals gets formed that's selective, that represents what, that can go out and look, ask questions, have criteria to look at other space, other locations that have done it, that support instructional methodology and outcomes. And to be able to bring that back and feed it in a cohesive way back to the architect, that to me is a really important component. So where is it happening? We can be driving, where is it happening? Allow, you know, a group of folks to go off and kind of do that, do that work to then come back and feed it to the architect. I'm not really sure how else to go about it. I don't know, I mean, we don't, I don't have a lot of experience in this category, so I don't want to come across sounding like I know it all. I do know, you know, at least, I know two of the architects' firms that have a lot of success in doing collaborative visioning that have resulted in a fair amount of outcomes in different states.
This is a tough one, David, because I feel like this is, the way this is structured, it's one of the weaker links to the whole process because in some ways, I feel like the RFP for this could, should and could apply to firms other than architectural firms. If an architectural firm wants to come in and says, yes, we can do that, and here's how we would do it, but there might be an educational consulting firm that would say, we can do that too, and this is how we would go about it. And I think there's some benefit to hearing how organizations with different orientations to the goal would get at it, that might inform it better. Because even what you're saying is when you say these firms have had success, I think the benchmark would be, we built something over here, and now you're gonna go talk to those folks, and they will, I don't know that they would say, our goal was to create opportunities for multi-age classrooms. And here's how the architectural firm supported that. How did they get to that goal was the first thing. I don't think the architectural firm is necessarily gonna say
Drive that first.
Here's what, here's
What the goals are for the district in terms of education. Yeah, and I'm struggling because I sense a little bit of pushback whenever I've had that conversation, not just with you, but with other people in the district. And as a board member, maybe I'm stepping in something that I don't know enough about because I am not in the classroom. I'm not, you know, in these buildings every day. So maybe there's something there that I'm not aware of that already has a clear picture of, you know, for example, at the elementary schools, or elementary school is the wrong place because we're talking about middle school and high school. But, you know, at the high school, we need more spaces for group projects. You know, people are, you know, more responsible for their own learning. They're off working on projects. We need more breakout spaces for those kinds of things. Those are the kind of conversations that we need to have, you know, what does the learning actually look like? And how is it likely to change over time? And maybe those conversations have already been had, and that's, maybe that's why I'm getting pushback a little bit. But I do feel like there is some process that's missing in there. Otherwise, I think it's very easy for us to get very excited about shiny new buildings that other districts have and get excited about, you know, what they're doing with those buildings when maybe that might be right for us, it might not be right for us. I don't know.
I mean, so I value your points. I mean, I think one of the things that, for teachers, some community members, including yourself, we've been at this a long time, probably a lot longer than most communities, dating back to two thousand and four, two thousand and eight, two thousand and fifteen with what we, whether it's got all the right tenants on it, but master planning and visioning. So we've gone through these visioning conversations, strategic planning conversations in the past. We've had NIAS visits that have involved, you know, a significant amount of one-on-one teacher interviews, looking at, you know, discrepancies where they are related to their instructional, what they're doing in instruction. So it's not like we haven't had the conversations. I think that's probably where the pushback comes back, is like, well, we've done a lot of talking. We've done a lot of sharing of what a space could do to support my teaching and student learning. So
Well, I guess my question then, I mean, is there a body of work someplace that is warehoused that could be, you know, that could form the bulk of that process, that, so we're not reinventing the wheel? I don't want us to have to go through all the same conversations again, if they've been had.
It's never.
I just, as a board member, because I'm newer, have not seen that pile of work that says, this is what we really want or would like to have or what we're hoping for holistically. I've seen bits of things, I've seen bits of things, but not the whole thing.
Yeah, so that work, to be clear, is available. And, you know, we've worked hard to keep it posted under our websites all the way back to those. They aren't always the most visited sites, I don't think. We have done that. That said, I'm not sure how popular, you know, it is still because I think things have changed, you know, from two thousand and four to now. Lots, you know, things change, and that's what we do want, you know? We want to continue to be asking the question around the instruction that we want to deliver, the interactions with students. Remember, we, you know, back then, we talked about individualized learning opportunities, but we're in a much different place with proficiency-based graduation and personalized learning plans. I think it was still still present in a lot of that conversation, but I think it's probably changed a little bit. So I do think there's opportunity to capitalize on the, the work that's been done in the past, um, and, and the, and the NIAS work, which is, has, has occurred. We have, it's ten years and it's being redone again. We're in the final phase of it next year to get that feedback. Right. So I think those all inform, but I don't disagree with you, Bridget, around how do we bring this, you know?
All together.
All together.
Because the culmination of the last process or the most recent process seemed to have been this whole discussion about the consolidation of the elementary schools. And I feel like a lot of the discussion of the high school and the middle school that happened at the community level kind of got buried in that discussion about the elementary schools. Um, and so we either need to sort of bring that back out or we need to have a new process for the middle school.
One again, what I'm thinking of is this, a, a committee that, that can, and again, it may be that then there's a third person, third party architect firm that we think can, can meet what we want when they hear what we, can meet what we
Yeah.
ask for. But in order to get there, we revisit, you know, what is it that we're looking for at the high school and middle school space that won't be dissimilar to when we get to the elementaries as well? Because again, there's some suggested next steps, you know, in here for the elementary, sorry.
Just some really foundational questions, and I'm sorry if they're obvious, but are there some foundational documents that are driving some of these discussions? So for example, I know that NIAS has accreditation standards for higher education institutions, about twenty pages, and they actually just redid them last year. I presume that they have similar standards for high schools or K-12 or, or something. So, you know, their financial standards, their educational outcome standards, personnel standards, all sorts of things. I assume that, that that's some of what informs us. And then do they also provide written feedback? I think they typically do. Again, in higher ed, this is what they do. So do you, are you going to have?
We will.
A catalog of written recommendations? So is that one of the foundational things that's driving the process?
So we, we have those same recommendations that came out eleven years ago?
It's, it's, I was wondering, and what is the vintage if you're doing like decadal, uh, uh, re, just, just like the colleges also, you know, it's, I think every five years, there's a check-in, but it's really ten years that you'd go through that, that big process. This is our ten-year process.
I mean, I do, I do also wanna say that I, I mean, that is important information, but that doesn't necessarily right-size it for us, you know? I mean, just, I mean, it's good important information. And definitely, the high school over the years has had many specific recommendations on spaces that are, I'm just gonna say the cafeteria, you know, or that they're just very much a glaring issue. And then spaces that aren't big enough to do the types of, uh, instruction. Those are kind of pretty gross, uh, needs. But I, I think that it, it does have some, some pretty important information, but put it together with what we're looking for based on what we're trying to do both now and in the future. That's where I think the power of this group connected to a firm that can then draw it up and say, this is what you could do to that particular space.
If I, if I think of two specific examples, the middle school gym is an obvious one. And that, the current design stands in the way of us being able to deliver on the health and wellbeing of students. So, so it's, it's focused on that, that curriculum, and we know that. However, we hear a lot about multi-tier system of support.
Yeah, MTSS.
And that is being implemented across the district or has been. So one of my questions would be, what is needed, not necessarily specifically structurally, but organizationally? What is needed? Is there something that we would direct an architectural firm to design in that would support, you know, the multi-tier system of support, for instance, because that is a focus area for us? I don't know the answer to that, but that's a clear priority we have. And, um, that would be an example of something, a, a discussion we'd have, but it would be, I mean, I'd be hard pressed to say we're gonna get feedback from an architectural firm that says, oh, you need.
This, this, and this to meet the, an MT, that MTSS.
Right.
Yeah. So they're not totally, I mean, some of this is, we gotta be careful of the jargon, you know, the jargon. So MTSS, that first lower tier is, you know, tier one instruction, right? So it's, um, delivering, um, education in the most appropriate way through a universally designed system that meets, you know, the, the, the spectrum of students that you serve. That environment that a teacher is gonna use, right, their classroom will, will allow for that flexibility of, of their, of their learning spectrum in their classroom. So that's tier one, being able to deliver that, that, that curriculum, if you will, in that way. So are there spaces where certain groups can go and do different things where other students are working in different areas? Um, but I, I don't necessarily wanna get into the details, but I think that you're right. We, we need to be able to say, this is the spaces that we want. And that, by saying, it supports our MTSS desired outcomes and model, you know? So, um, I think the discussion is around the architect.
From, from an outcome standpoint, or, or, you know, it's not necessarily closure, but I would, the subcommittees are still in place, correct?
Mm-hmm.
I, I would just ask the subcommittee to maybe consider, my, my concern is if we go out to architectural firms exclusively with an RFP, it, it may delay the timeframe to find out those firms maybe don't have the competencies needed to deliver this. So at a minimum, to have the subcommittee have a conversation around, you know, the design of an RFP potentially being broader than those that an architectural firm could exclusively reply to, and that maybe we cast the net a little wider and get a different variety of skill sets to provide input to this one, task one B, basically. Because I think you've heard some of that discussion tonight.
Yeah, because in my mind, the struggle is, is always really task one B is really task one B and one C, because there is the costing out and the design and all of that. And that is clearly an architect's job. But there's really, one B is really this more, you know, what do we want before we start looking at what the options are to meet those needs?
So let me just, so what, what kind of a recommendation, which is important for me to, to be able to move on this? Again, I, I don't wanna continue to put, you know, iterations that, that make it, you know, I'm gonna stretch this to be, I'm gonna need another year in order to do it. So I feel like we currently have active RFPs for, we, we, we receive them in phase one and phase two. Phase one was, um, specific to the, the structural, mechanical, electrical. The second phase, could we use the same respondents to the RFPs and ask a very specific question of how they would support us in, um, facilitating the conversation around the educational want? How, how would they do that and, and allow that to be part of the subcommittee review?
I still think we need to look for at least two others, I would say, that are not architects, that are, that are exclusively around visioning. I don't know what you think, Elizabeth, in terms of the number, but I feel like we need to, we just, we do, we need to broaden the, the group, I think. Um, and I think that the architectural firms, we could certainly ask that question of, and if they.
So is it rebid, is it, is it resubmit, putting out another RFP for phase two, you know, and being more broad?
I don't know how phase two got structured in the original RFP, but is it, I mean, that's where I was suggesting maybe the subcommittee revisit that. And, uh, I, actually, you're answering one question, which is the RFP's already out there, is what you're saying.
Yeah, we, we collected it. Remember, it was gonna be, it was bundled together initially. We, we decoupled it to be phase one, structural, mechanical, electrical. Phase two, we postponed until this budget, which passed. Um, so it's in the, in there, you know?
We did make it clear though, because I was already sort of making noise about this at that time, that just because you were awarded phase one didn't mean we were accepting the bid for both phases, and that there could be some other process with regard to phase two. I think the way, at least the way the RFPs were that I read, that they seem to be structured as more of a sales document to sort of say, yes, choose us for phase two as well. But there was, it was clear, I think, to them that this was definitely broken into two different, um, segments.
Is there any reason not to continue the process on phase two, just to collect the information? I mean, if, if the RFPs are already out there, it seems that there's sort of a, a binary decision, either pull them back in or you let them proceed at pace. You receive the work, but I'm presuming that, you know, said, we're not obliged to proceed with any of this. I don't know if that would be helpful. I mean, I share your reservations. You get an architectural firm and they're going to come with a lot of really nice and expensive things that you absolutely need to do. Uh, but it's also helpful to, you know, I mean, sometimes you see a lot of information that you hadn't thought of, or you get some ideas that you.
Yeah, I think my reservation is that, I mean, I, and I don't wanna speak on behalf of the architect firm, that, I mean, a big part of what they do is to say, what is it that you need, you know? And for the, in this case, a committee that needs to be articulate to say what it is that you need. And then it's up to us, the custom, you know, the receiver of that information to say, you know, have you hit that mark, right? Um, I just know that that's a big, big part of what they do. It's not just show you pretty pictures and make you select. I'm not trying to, you know, it's really what is it that you need that supports your, your mission?
What are proposals do?
What's that?
What are proposals?
Well, proposals have already come in.
Steve, so the old proposals that you and I read are broken into phase one and phase two. There's not been another RFP process.
Okay, I'm sorry, I misunderstood.
I think what we're advocating for is a separate RFP process that says, who's gonna handle just the visioning piece? And that's embedded in some of those proposals that we got back, um, that, as part of phase two. Um, but the question is whether we need to reopen that phase two RFP process and ask the architect firms plus potentially a couple of consultants to respond.
I wonder if the subcommittee could look at the responses to phase two from the existing firms and really, based on this conversation, assess what those firms would bring to that process and understand, because I, I don't have any recollection of what their responses were on that, on that part B, but
And then meet.
Understand if we believe that gap is gonna exist and consider redesigning an RFP.
It's not, it, because part of that is, I mean, we've, we've, we've talked about it. You, you've read about some of what the deliverables are on, on their quote-unquote phase two. But I think it would be of value to just dig into that a little bit and where questions exist.
And they were responding specifically to this assessment of educational value of upgrades, correct?
Correct.
Yes.
So I, I mean, that might be the first indication of how those four firms would have approached that question in and of itself.
If that then passes, right, the committee's, um, kind of test, then a selection could move forward. If it doesn't hit it, then we redefine and send out another RFP that broadens the scope beyond, well, to whoever would respond.
I'm happy to take another look at it. I mean, my recollection of it was they have educational people in each of the firms that, you know, have educational experience. I, I, I don't recall being overly enthusiastic about their, their credentials in terms of gathering together, you know, starting from where we are, basically. I think they would be great at starting, you know, after the process of, of deciding what's really important to us educationally and taking that and turning that into, um, options for upgrades and that kind of thing. I think there's, there's a good translation there because they have those educational people and they understand the language that we speak once we tell them. But I'm just concerned about them driving the process still, after having.
Yeah, I understand.
And I'm happy to go reread it. Maybe I'll feel more comfortable now that we've gotten through phase one and, and where we are, but I, yeah.
Yeah, I'm, and again, I, I understand, you know, this is a, this is a big next step decision for us because, again, we wanna avoid missteps. I do feel like there is still, I can't appropriately represent, and that's not my job to represent them. I do know that there's some significant success stories within Vermont, uh, where these have been done, the Shelburne Community School, one of the firms. Um, there's a couple other locations that I know that the other firm has represented where they went through this long conver, you know, what is it you want? Um, iterations that was a community slash school initiative that people rant and rave about, that it was really ineffectively done. I, I don't know that they didn't use a third-party person, but they say the deliverables were exactly what we wanted, and this is why. So they walk you through the spaces and say, this is what we wanted and why, and this is what we got. Um, so there were some nice connections for me. Um, so I, I like the idea of kind of doing a subcommittee, taking a look at the RFPs to see, number one, if it does in fact hit the mark. I like the idea of the subcommittee asking questions that maybe where they don't meet the mark and asking them back out to the fore. And if what comes back isn't satisfactory.
I think there could be a, an interview process
That's right.
With the firms that's a little more qualitative.
Yeah.
But I, I, I think the reason I feel as strongly about this as I do, David, is that this is the work that is going to gain the public support for the big investment that we're talking about here. So
Agreed.
Um, this has to be, you know, very, um, justifiable and clear what the impact on outcomes is gonna be.
Mm-hmm. And again, I'm, I'm pushing on the timeline here because you, you know what happens is the next thing will be, you know, we're gonna, the, the windows continue to, to get bigger and bigger. I, I like that idea. I think, I think that's a, a good next step for us.
You're on, Alex.
Okay, thanks.
So I, I'm hearing some, some specific direction from the board. Am I to assume that's good?
Yeah, I think that if, if we're gonna do the, the interviewing of the architectural firms first, I think we need to go ahead and schedule those meetings and get them scheduled quickly, just given everybody's vacation schedules and, and all of that. So we'll have to just circle back with Martin and see when he's back.
Right. So the subcommittee are Bridget and Martin. Um, so that's certainly one component. We also could open that committee up some more, but I think it rests currently with the board right now to discern the, the next step. So, again, I, I wanna try not, I wanna try not to be, um, delaying.
Right.
So again, I, I think that makes good sense for, uh, okay. So moving on, task two, identify and set up a system to monitor and report issues that may, um, or may not impact the district's ability to maintain and improve the quality of pre-K education by April thirtieth of the threats, um, to the health education outcomes. And this is specific to the space at Chamberlain School. So again, most of you are aware that we've looked at the elementary schools in depth and developed an analysis. And this is where we're gonna get into this in a moment, the threshold analysis criteria. Um, but specifically where we get into the, the, the bottom, in order to get that relevant data, we put together a monitoring system. We've looked at enrollment, I'm at one now, looked at enrollment and demographic data. Uh, that's been done by an outside consultant that's inactive, and Steve referred to that earlier. Um, we think that, um, that remains a really critical component of, of our, our work. The summary of this report, again, highlights the enrollment forecast, and we're gonna talk about those specifically in the, in our threshold criteria, but it is referenced in tab five on those pages, one through twelve. A capacity at each of the elementary schools has been updated. Again, we went, this was something that was a little bit loose in the past, I think, around capacity. So we went very, very detailed around measuring of the spaces, looking at the square footage and not just coming up with an arbitrary one-size-fits-all because every school had different class sizes. So that capacity information is found in tab three, pages one through thirty-two. The noise monitoring, again, we, we were awaiting this. This has now been concluded, and that rests in, in, um, in task three, and that has been concluded. So those are some of the monitoring of systems, right, that I think will play out to be important for us into the future. Task three was to develop a contingency plan by April thirty, two thousand and eighteen, um, and looking at equitable delivery of services. So we have now baseline data. This is specific to the Chamberlain School. We have the baseline data that we referenced earlier, um, that, and again, I think it's important. It's, it was all activity associated with noise at the, at the school. It was airport, trucks, traffic, et cetera. And so we do have that. We were particularly mindful of, obviously, the FEIS study that was done by the FAA, kind of indicating what our contour sound, uh, levels were. I'm on page three now, the top. Um, obviously, the report yielded some information to us around, uh, the events in excess of the seventy-five decibel level. Again, the report, um, Again, the report concluded that we were within the VOSHA statutory requirements. But as I referenced earlier, the FICON levels recommended for schools for both indoor and outdoor were high. And so this is in part what was referenced earlier around the sound, uh, soundproofing measures that were the Jones-Pang group that I referred to earlier. So specifically, the plan to, to address this was to provide better soundproofing. Again, we're on, I think, on par with that being accomplished. And then the other part here is we think it's important, these are next steps, to seek some medical and for medical professional knowledge so that can continue to assess us in determining the, those exposure levels. Again, just our, our way of validating kind of the, the FICON levels that we've heard. And the provide, uh, provide funding for additional noise monitoring in October of 19, after operations change at the airport. So again, we have baseline data now. Again, I think a good question is, we may, may not have to do it as elaborate, but can we do another check? You know, when things perhaps change at, at any location to see if our baseline has changed. Task four, we but.
Before we move on from task three, I just want to point out though that, and again, I don't know if we need to change the resolution or the specific resolution was really to develop a contingency plan for Chamberlain in case it needed to be closed. Not just contingency plan for Chamberlain, but for the district, basically, to make sure that we're providing equitable education across the elementary schools if Chamberlain needed to be closed. I understand that we're, we're, we're on the verge, I would say, of being comfortable that we don't need to close Chamberlain based on the sound study that we've had. I just, I just want to make sure that we're, as a board, making a decision that we're saying we're standing down right now from making a contingency plan. Cause we don't have a contingency plan right now. If we were to do another study and after the F-35 comes, we don't have anything in progress right now that says operationally, this is how we would very quickly move those students to other locations or what we would do. We sort of had early discussions about that before we decided to focus on sound insulation. But I feel like we need to have that discussion as a board. Are we moving away from that and saying that we're going to focus on sound insulation and then revisit this later on? Or should we still be moving on having something in place in the background that says this is what we have to do if there's an emergency situation once the F-35 arrives? If it's louder than we expected it to be, or sound insulation can't mitigate the level of noise that we're seeing with the F-35? Because it's just happening so soon. If we don't start thinking about that, at least in broad terms, I'm a little concerned that we could be caught on the back foot.
That, that's a really good point. Bridgette is, I think David's already done, I think, a fair amount of work as, you know, I don't see it here, but I remember that we saw, you know, four or five different alternatives for a quick plan or an interim plan while we're getting to the new configuration. So that probably shouldn't disappear from this analysis.
Well, and that's my question. How much time, money, effort do we spend? You know, are we thinking that we're going to spend to make those plans more detailed? Because those were kind of bullet point plans with some things like this is how much a trailer costs and, you know, the, sort of this vague outlines of what a plan would be. And we never really made a decision out of those, which would be the plan that we would likely go with in the event that we needed to. And I understand that that would take more time and, you know, focus away. I'm not saying advocating for either direction, more detail on that or not. But I just feel like as a board, we need to say that, hey, we're moving away from this resolution and we need to make sure that we're giving David clear direction in terms of what we want from him in this regard, how much we want to have of a plan in place and how much is just a broad outline that we would then operationalize later on if we needed to.
And you're reminding me, Bridgette, and I think, you know, David, correct me, because you're, I think, in more regular contact with the airport, and I haven't since they suspended the.
The technical advisory.
Right. But we are supposed to, by, I think, August or September, start getting the new FEIS with respect to the F-35.
Noise exposure remapping?
Yeah, they're gonna, they're gonna actually start giving us some insights there. So I think I agree with Bridgette that we probably should, you know, make sure that we don't lose sight of the good work that's been done to date. And then maybe we can wait a couple of months or kind of firm up just our understanding of when we're going to have a little bit more insight into what those new contour lines are going to look like. And that might be our trigger for digging in. You know, maybe we can postpone.
Right.
Deciding how much to spend, how much time, you know, time and money to spend on developing the contingency plans when we've got what I think are pretty imminent datum coming out, so.
Some of the contingency plan was also though to have a trade-off analysis of what it, I mean, it was, it was an emergency scenario. But it was a trade-off also if we were looking at significant investments, sort of, it would, it would be like the make versus buy type decision. So it might be good on a future agenda to kind of reinvigorate the bullet points associated with contingency plan. And then maybe we could have a discussion about those and at least the board is refreshed. And then we, that would frame the conversation of how far into depth we would want to go on that.
Right, because again, it's been several months since we've talked about this last, but you know, depending upon where those contour lines fall, Chamberlain could be eligible for purchase. So, you know.
And, and the original conversation too said, having the plan was important even if it was shelved in the end.
Right.
Based on data as it emerged, so. Okay.
Yeah.
Is that?
I think it's good, we can bring back. We can bring back, bring back those, those points. Again, you know, I had alluded to those several and certainly I went, I didn't continue to activate or to budget for contingency plans. I went with a contingency plan that I thought was achievable, based on kind of what we knew at the time.
Oh, sure.
So I, I don't disagree. I mean, part of it would be in order to have activated some of the other contingency plans, I would have had to put significant amount of monies. And if you remember, for instance, we put mobile units initially at a cost. And of course, when we were building the budget, we weren't unsure of what the, what the, the funding model was going to be. We were very, very afraid of what the restrictions were going to be. We weren't going to get the same amount of dollars. It was going to be restrict, restrictions. So I don't, I don't disagree with bringing those back to see, are we on point or, you know, what other, what other options may need to be proposed?
Just remember that you've done a lot of work and let's keep it there. And again, I think in two months or three months' time at most, we're going to have a first cut at, you know, how serious the potential deployment of the F-35 is. And that's perfect. That's pretty early in the budget development process, so we can start to position the FY 20 budget, you know, to think about how seriously we need to take that.
And again, the only, my only caution is that it's not about, it's really about the noise. I, I don't want to be necessarily specific to the, the incident that, that projects the noise. What we know from the ATC is there's a, a variety of functions that are happening that, that drive that. So I, I do hear what you're saying.
The variable is that they are for the first time going to incorporate that data.
With a noise exposure map is going to be doing it around that airport.
And that's the basis for a lot of the funding decisions that flow, you know, from the federal government, so.
Yep, and so task four, again, last but not least, is just the strategic plan process. Again, I think it's pretty important that the process and the format of this analysis can be determined once we have collected the, the information. So I think we're well positioned now with the data that we have to then move forward with a, with a strategic plan. Now, obviously, what we just talked about is a component of that. But as we look to the long term, here's, here's where the formation of that really happens. I don't think that the strategic plan can be, could have been done prior to. It's really one of those things that needs to, you know, be part of the utilization of the data as well as a lot of other things that, that drive that long-term plan with our community. Okay, John, anything else to add before we go on to the threshold? And I assure you, we'll, we'll move a little bit quicker on the threshold, but I, I do appreciate the conversation specific to this big topic. I need nothing else to add. So I want to direct you back to page 33 under tab three. And John and I are going to walk you through this. Let me, let you get to that. It does have in red the updated time, so it's, has the date of 6/20 on it. So right out of the gate on page 33, I'm not going to read the three paragraphs, but I want to just point you to the condition level. Again, part of the work that we've done with Bridgette and Martin was to look at kind of point separation. So we changed the zero, um, one and two to zero, one and three. Those are the condition codes that are, that are mentioned there, so.
Sorry, David, can I get that section again?
Yeah, that's, uh, section three.
Page camera here, I got it.
Yeah. You got to turn, I'm sorry. So the condition codes, just highlighting that that was changed and recommended from the previous. Page 34 rolls up this, what we came up with as a summary pages. And it goes by category, by number. Again, those are not necessarily ranked in any particular order, but enrollment, staffing levels, measures of student achievement, audit of student opportunities, cost per pupil, conditions of facilities, specific school factors, safety and security, and item seven was specific to factors and neighborhood concerns for the Chamberlain School. So also the committee recommended that we had a total, so we, we totaled those. But of course, when you total them, then it throws off your condition code. So when you got seven there, that you don't, we don't have a condition code of seven because it's a subtotal. We added another column, or I should say, John added on behalf of the, the committee, an average of the condition code. So for instance, enrollment is a condition code of 2.3. So when you kind of look at these from a, you know, kind of a, where are the, the biggest impacts, certainly enrollment is one. Staffing level allocation is another at 1.3. If you flip the page, you see another condition code of 2-0, average is the condition of facilities, buildings and grounds. And then I would say the one on the bottom, specific to school-specific factors among seven, at 1.7 is the, is the Chamberlain School. So this is, this is a tool that we've, now we populated, using some of the feedback and direction from the subcommittee to kind of get at kind of the high-level piece. So let me just pause there for a second before we kind of give you just a, a little, an update on each one of those. Questions, concerns, thoughts?
This is Alex here.
Yeah, Alex.
Just, just a question, can you save a copy of the new inserts? Because my notebook is at home and it is not with me right now, so I'll have to get them in there the next time I come in.
Yeah, no problem. We can do that. We're on, we're on tab three. And we're in, we're talking about the threshold criteria, pages 33, 34 and 35. Okay?
Great, thank you.
So we're going to kind of move pretty quick through here because what we've done is where there's a condition code, so turning to page 36, where there's a condition code, why did it receive a condition code of one? For instance, on enrollment at Rick Markcott. Certainly you can refer to the table. Again, this is a, also was a recommendation of the subcommittee to include kind of the table that indicated that. But the reason that, that, so the specific question is enrollment climbing or decreasing at this time? We gave it a condition code of one because the recent drop of enrollment of 23 students and the capacity of the school to handle the current level as well as to add some students is, is, is adequate. So it's got a condition code because it's seeing that variability. It's not always just because it's increasing. Stop me if you, if you have questions, or John. So John, you're, you're on.
Sure, that was the, what, that's what's happened so far at Markcott and in just a couple of years forward. But if you go out to 2028.
He's on 37, we're on page 37.
Page 37, the next, that's next mark. That got a condition code one because the forecast drop of enrollment down to 27 more students is a potential concern which should be watched. So that's why it got a contention code of one.
I thought we had talked previously about under enrollment having also capacity and that there being a graph that had sort of a couple of different measures of capacity for the specific school and then where we were in terms of enrollment now and what enrollment was likely to look like versus those capacity numbers. I thought we had talked about that previously. And that capacity in general, because we had sort of said that the real reason that Orchard, for example, has, you know, a condition code of, of three is a capacity issue. I thought we had, I, I, maybe my memory is incorrect, but I, I thought we had talked about adding capacity as a separate.
Yeah, so we can graph it, but we did, we do have capacity determinations, right? We, we did go through that.
And there are. Bridgette's right though. We, we haven't graphed that here.
Right.
I think it, what's happening is our summary now is about 30 pages. And maybe the decision in the subcommittee was to have as many, as much data here in this summary report as you can. But then possibly a, a suggest, well, it's a suggestion from me is here that we would cross-reference changes like that back to the report. Because then, then you have all this data and then the summary becomes pretty voluminous. I mean, that's just a, that's just a thought.
I think.
Yes, you did.
The takeaway is on page 37, under that condition, where, where you see the enrollments of the three elementary schools, to just add a, add a line or some sort of a.
No, my point in the past was this, well, my point in the past was that, that it doesn't really help us in a summary for every school to have the same graph in it. You know, it, these are supposed to be school by school, you know, bits of information that explain why the condition code is what the condition code is. And I thought we had talked about having a section on capacity that had just a graph for just the school of what the, what the capacity was. And then showed what the enrollment projections looked like, graphed against that. So that, for example, for Orchard, we would see that there's a little bit of, you know, a, a lack of capacity.
Your overcapacity.
You're overcapacity on enrollment for a certain number of years, and then it's expected to drop back down to within reasonable limits. But it, it would just be, yeah, it would just be more helpful.
We can, we can do it. So for this one at Rick Markcott, for instance, we would remove Orchard and Chamberlain. You'd see only the, the Rick Markcott line, which is the, which is the, the blue line. And you would see capacity line moving there, there just right around that 400. So, and similarly, when you get to the Orchard one, you'd see their capacity is the 400 and you'd see, and see where you, where you're going over it.
Right. And there, I think there were two or three different measures we were using of capacity. And if those three different lines could be on there, it would be helpful to sort of see, they would create and create a band that says, you know, if we were assessing capacity this way, we're kind of within it. If we're using the most conservative one of capacity, then we're, we're above the capacity.
And the reason that it gets a condition code, to go back to what I said earlier, is not just because it's, you know, because you're either nearing capacity, but if you're significantly under capacity, it also gets the condition code.
Right, 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 right.
Okay. Good, thank you. Student achievement, Rick, at Rick Markcott, obviously, we gave a condition code. Student achievement, achievement measures consistent with other elementary schools. And again, kind of going on our current data, we have, we have a, you know, a discrepancy at, a lower than, so it gets a condition code of one. Part of this could be, you know, the cohort of students. There's, there's a lot of additional information, but nonetheless, it gets a condition code of one. Moving on, I'm, I'm going to just move over these. A lot of these are just condition assessments and we didn't, it's all associated to the, to the, to the one on student measurement of achievement, which is page 38, carries over to page 39. And student opportunities, again, we feel like the, the budgeting process has provided student opportunities pretty consistently across the whole district, so I didn't get a condition code of one or above. So John, back, you're back on, on the page 39, bottom, cost per pupil trends.
In, in the graph, the data we collected, Martin had asked us to look at the cost of teachers and the projections going out. Not to just use a straight line, but to factor in changes in who, projecting when people would retire. That's a bit of tricky business, but what we did do was go back the last five years and project teachers and staff costs and used an individual projection for each of the years forward for those schools. So it's a little bit more accurate rather than just using the cost of living or the total budget increase. So that's one thing. Second thing is that the, at, at Markcott School, the, the cost has been hand in hand with Orchard over the years. Except now Orchard enrollment went up, so there's, all the costs are divided, the fixed costs particularly are divided by more students. And with Markcott. the fixed costs particularly are divided by more students, and with Marcot settling down, it's, it's becoming higher, and then if the forecast for less students keeps going, then the cost per student goes up. At twenty-twenty-eight, assuming the forecast is correct, Marcot would be our highest cost per student, whereas now Chamberlain is. So, that, that got a one, one point for that code. Got that concern.
Okay, you're on to, you're moving on to page forty?
Right. The condition of current physical facilities, buildings and grounds, at Marcot School, and forty kind of straddles two pages, in fiscal nineteen, there was seventy, or fifty-five direct costs, fifty-five thousand direct costs, but in twenty, in twenty-one, there's another two-hundred-ninety-six thousand six hundred in direct costs, and a hundred-and-sixty-eight thousand five hundred of costs, and for roof repairs, and it got a concern of, one, because that's a lot of money, and two, in the whole scheme of things, it's not just, it's not just Marcot School, we're looking at, we're looking at the other schools also. So, that's a, concern we have to keep looking at.
Okay, page forty-one, school-specific factors and neighborhood concerns. Again, we're on Rick Marcot, we gave this a condition code of one, because the specific question is neighborhood development or construction activity impinging on, or negatively impacting the ability to deliver educational services. That got a condition code of one. Obviously, folks should be aware by now that the city center development project has the potential to disrupt easy and safe access, pedestrian and vehicular access, for probably the next two or three years. So, again, that got a condition code of one. Safety and security, again, I'm in the bottom of page forty-one, are there significant concerns around safety and security? This got a condition code of one, in the air of heightened concern over safety, security for our students and staff and building, we struggle to decide how safe is safe enough in our, in our in-town, in-town sites, safer than the more rural. A couple of things here that go on along the page forty-two, and I'm just going to point you to the bottom of page forty-two, again, all of it has relevance here, but the Williston Road widening project, which is currently underway, is something that I think is important for people, it's widening by thirty additional feet. If you know the location of Rick Marcot on the front edge of Williston Road, additional fifteen feet on either side is significant to the, to the closeness of that school, so that's a particular area of concern, particularly of accidents, you know, vehicles type things of that, so that's why it got a condition code of one. And then, moving on to page forty-three, now we walk through Chamberlain, so we're on the Chamberlain School, so the enrollment climbing or decreasing, we gave that a one. Again, you have a slight increase of about seven percent during the next ten years, again, it provides what we believe is a condition code of one. I'm going a little fast, so feel free to pause me if, if you wish. Again, explanation and graphing, although we were mindful of what you brought up, Bridget, and the need for this capacity component similar to Chamberlain as well. So, I'm moving on to, again, you're walking through condition codes, we're moving on to page forty-seven now, where there's a condition code of one, for cost per pupil trends. John, you're on that one.
Right, and the trend in the past has been that Chamberlain has been the highest school, highest cost per student for direct costs, in the most recent history, and that enrollment had been dropping. So, this is, the question specifically, is the cost per pupil deviating significantly? Yes, but we're still able to have a functioning, a well-functioning school, it's not like some districts where they're completely not able to run a successful school, so it's a concern, but it's one, we're kind of over that now.
Page forty-eight, we got a condition code of three.
This, and, excuse me, David, the, the amounts here for stewardship for Chamberlain aren't as high, but the parking lot conditions do warrant that we need to look at this very, very carefully, because the, if you look at the number of spaces per student at Chamberlain, it's significantly less space, and we have people parking on grass areas outside of classrooms on a regular basis, so that's something we have to do something about in, in the near future. And then, we also, we're doing this with the data we talked about earlier, about soundproofing and outside, so we don't have costs for that, but it's, it's something to think about, too. So, that's why sound insulation is there, so that's why that got a three.
So, page forty-nine, school-specific factors and neighborhood concerns, again, we're consistent with our, all the categories here, one thing specific here is that we have added some additional sub-questions, and, and either allotted those to the specific condition at Chamberlain. So, these are specific, has noise increased or decreased? Obviously, we've established now a baseline, some baseline data, and we'll be looking at all of the relevant additional information that will come out from the updated sound studies that are soon to be underway. Average noise readings, again, these all have gotten condition codes of one, based on the report that we received from ATC. I don't know if anyone has questions about that, before we move on to fifty, page fifty? Page fifty, safety and security, again, just not dissimilar from the other schools, around the location, around a variety of situations around safety and security, way the buildings were constructed, it's got a condition code of one there as well. So, on the bottom of page fifty, it has seven there, actually, you need to, you can just pencil in, or pen in, it's actually eleven, it should be, the concerns in five of the eight categories is a sum total of eleven, we'll also make the change on the, on the summary page as well. So, we're on to page fifty-one, Orchard, and John, you're on for that one.
Okay. Enrollments have increased, and, and this is a function of capacity. It is a good thing that enrollments have increased, they're, the class sizes aren't too high right now, but there's not a lot of space for services outside the classroom, special ed, private rooms, special ed offices, our, our schools out, the pre-K, any of those kind of things that we have now, that we highlighted in the report. So, it's a condition one, for enrollments climbing or decreasing, climbing or decreasing, they're climbing, and we still have the capacity. What do enrollment projections over the five-to-ten-year period indicate? The enrollment would go over our max capacity by about twenty, I forget the number now, but twenty-nine or thirty students, and so that's why that has a three of concern, something to look at, not in this fiscal year, and it's too late to do really much about that, the budget's passed, and we're just waiting for the state to see what the taxes will be, but in, in the current, or next two years, it's really something that has to be addressed.
Again, similarly, we understand that, put the capacity line on there, we'll do the same on that one. Okay?
Staffing, once, staffing has been consistent with other district elementary schools, and there's, you being on the board, and some of you for a number of years, and some not, you know that when we don't have the staffing right, we hear about it, so I think we've been getting the staffing correct. So, that's a one, it's a concern, because it's, it's hard to guess what the kindergarten's going to be like, that kind of thing. But, should additional staff be allocated, or should staffing be reduced? That's a three, because of enrollment, where do we put the teachers, where do we have the classrooms? So, it just kind of compounds that problem, and this is another manifestation of that.
You have questions, Steve?
Yeah, just to, you know, I think you mentioned it here, but notwithstanding that I understand historically, it's a very acrimonious question, I think the sooner that we start, you know, at least mentioning redistricting as a possible solution, the better. Understanding that Chamberlain is still a question mark, I kind of see an order of operations here, I don't know that we can, unless the redistricting is sort of confined to Marcot and Orchard, maybe. I do, it does seem like there's sort of a serial set of processes that has to happen, we have to really decide what the disposition of Chamberlain is, with a full understanding of what the, you know, the new configuration of the air guard's going to be, but it does seem like, you know, if, if we're still at Chamberlain, if the decision is that we're going to continue to utilize the existing space, and it just seems redistricting is the, you know, it's something that kind of presents itself as sort of the, I don't want to say path of least resistance, because it doesn't sound like it's that, but, but certainly the most logical, just kind of truing up the capacities, or right-sizing capacities of the schools.
Right, so the vulnerabilities, you know, when you have the peaks and valleys, or the ups and downs in the demographic, you know, if we can get, if we can get ourselves to twenty-twenty-five, you know, then there's, there starts to become a, some relief there, you know, I don't know if it's the right word, relief, but downward, slightly downward-turning enrollment, then. How do you weather that, that period of time between twenty, twenty and twenty-twenty-five?
You're either going to do something about it relatively soon, or you're going to tough it out.
That's right, and, and part of that is that for the short, you know, if it's a short-term resolve, then you, you have significant impact, which could affect, you know, individuals that are currently in the system, so you can bifurcate, you know, families that might need to go one place or the other, has pretty significant ramifications around trying to get that right-sized. But, I don't disagree, it's an option, potential suggested option that could, could bring some relief. Okay, moving on.
Sorry, and I guess what I'm just thinking, though, is, I mean, either, again, maybe it's wrong, you just sort of pop it on folks, or it's a conversation that we have for two years leading up to when we actually plan to do it, and.
I think it's been on the table, I think, yeah, we should just continue to keep that open, yeah, it's been discussed, I think, every time we've brought up what we're going to do about it, but yeah, I think we should continue, I agree.
Thanks for that. So, moving on, measurement of student achievement, again, on page fifty-three, again, the condition code is currently zero, we see, you know, continued, you know, outcomes there that are, that we're saying are appropriate, that don't warrant a condition code of one or greater. Fifty-four, again, no noted, no noted condition code areas, again, I'm open for, we're open for feedback here on those, but I'm trying to move us along. Page fifty-five, on the condition of the current physical facility and building and grounds at, at Orchard.
Yeah, we have the stewardship plan, and I know that there's parking issues, safety issues at Orchard that are, I believe that that's what's covered in there, and you can see that's very significant in fiscal twenty. And just to kind of, what Steve just said, we did write in here, redistricting does not appear to be an option at this time, but maybe we should change that, at least, that's, that's the view from right now, but it's not, not throwing it out the window, that's for sure.
I'm sorry, John, where are you?
Oh, in, in page fifty-five, if you look in the body of the second box, it just talks about the construction of the parking and access, and additional funds, significant improvements, and then the second to last sentence is, we did make the comment, redistricting does not appear to be an option at this time.
Okay, and is that for community pushback reasons, or is that just because Chamberlain's disposition is uncertain at this point?
That's why, yeah.
Okay, all right.
Right, I mean, if all, if all, if there were no condition codes placed on any of those, those facilities, then I would have said that that, that would be different, right?
Okay.
Under the current, mm-hmm.
Understood.
Fair. So, page fifty-six, school-specific factors, neighborhood concerns, we gave that a condition code of one. Most importantly, it's just within that Shelburne Road corridor, those of you who've been around and seen the corridor, you know, widen and become more and more active, that's one of the reasons they got the condition code of one, and condition actions that are, or conditions that surround that school could have some detriment to there. Again, we're on a busy road corridor, and there's some commercial properties just to the immediate west of the facility, that, you know, pose some, some level of concern, i.e. auto body, auto bottle painting, et cetera like that. Under safety and security, it's got a condition code of one, just highlighting specific to that second category, as I just said, that the commercial property to the west, the next is that we have one entrance in and out of that particular school, we have no other entrances available to us at the present time, and our entrance doors, not eight, not different than what, what actually could be highlighted at the other, is right off the main entrance, again, not what would be a condition that would be advisable. So, that's page fifty-six. And then, page fifty-seven is just a summary, there's no condition code on that, it's a follow-up, actually, and then the total ranking is, of the five of the eight categories is thirteen. That's really, really quick, but again, trying to highlight, you know, some methodology that we walk through to determine condition codes, and also trying to be succinct from school to school, and not be random around those established conditions. So, again, this is a, this is an opportunity for us to give you some updates to the condition factors. I would like to make a recommendation that I meet with some, meet with you individually to, number one, allow you to go over the more specific data, and to be, begin to talk about some suggested options, and listen to you as well, some of which we've already, we've got some takeaways from this, but then to share with you some, and listen to you around those options that could cultivate into, you know, some next, some larger conversations with the public involved as well. So, questions, ideas? Are you good, John, anything you wanted to say, any follow-up?
No, thank you for having me be involved.
Thank you.
I know we missed a couple of details, no, we're.
Oh, no.
We tried to incorporate, Elizabeth, Elizabeth, you really helped us, because we kind of know what the one, two, three were, but if you don't say it on each point, then it's, it's lost, and you lose your audience.
Yeah, why, why did you do that?
We do that, so I was good.
Yeah, the one, I know this followed the conversation on task four, but I still, I, I think we're missing, and this is obviously specific to the elementary schools, and it actually feeds a lot of the other work that's gone on, but I do think we need to continue the dialogue around the SWOT analysis, because that's a broader conversation, and I think we're missing, there's a lot of tactical information in here, and we're missing some of the more district-wide analyses here, and I think we've had that conversation before, but, you know, maybe we can go offline, or when you're having the one-on-one conversations, kind of speak to that as well.
Yeah, again, and I, I should have been clearer when I, when I said task force, task four on the SWOT analysis, is that what I, what I said earlier around the strategic plan development, is that you need to have the quantitative data, available data, in order to make those assumptions. I think we're positioned well to now be able to do the strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats connected to that work. I, I think, as I said earlier, I don't think we could have, I could have done it, but I don't think it would have had the, the validated data that, that we now have. I, I think the other part that's, that's missing here is that we have some next steps that we need to consider, that we need to do similarly, a deeper dive on the structural, mechanical, and electrical at the elementary buildings. You know, so that, that's, that's, I think, an important component that we need to, you know, we need to understand. We have had the good fortune that most haven't, that we've had a stewardship plan that kind of tells us, but we've had that at the high school and the middle school as well, and so when we did the deeper dive on the, those, looking at those facilities, it has provided us some additional information that may or may not assist us in that next step decision.
I guess I have two questions about that. One was, I, and correct my memory, I thought that the last go-around, when the recommendation came out, that we consolidate the elementary schools, that some of that work had been done, the structural, mechanical, and electrical, because there had been discussions with that task force about whether any of those schools could be expanded if necessary, so for example, if we. So, for example, if we chose to go with a tool school option, like there are all these different options laid out. And my understanding was that there had been a little bit of work done to understand whether walls were movable, you know, what some of those structural issues were at those. So, one was how deep that dive was. And two, how urgent is the, the structural, electrical, mechanical on the elementary schools? Is there a specific thing that has caused you to feel like that needs to be moved up on the priority list? Or is, what's driving that, that sort of reinvigoration of that, that need?
So, I don't disagree that we, in the past, we've got, we have done far more at the elementaries than we did at the middle school with a, with a deeper dive. That said, it was, it was nowhere near the same level that we've done on the high school and the middle school with, you know, experts coming in and crawling, looking, studying, assessing, looking at plans, looking at all that. So, I don't think it would take a lot for us to do that. But I think in, if you're making a decision around an expansion or not, renovation or new building, new attachment, that, that's a critical component, if in fact that's where we go. So, it could be put in a, in a sequence of decision-making. But nonetheless, I, I just don't want to not mention that to you, that people would say, well, you did this at the, at the high school and the middle school and you came up with pretty significant items. Where does that list reside with the elementary? Is that the stewardship plan or should there be something else there? So, I, I just mentioned that as a, you know, we have to pay attention to that as well. So, again, this is good, good feedback. Got some next steps from you. I'll, I'll work to set up some individual meetings. I can do it and, and again, seek your, your feedback on the next steps. So, thank you, John.
Thanks, John.
Thank you.
So, we've gone way over on our agenda. Can we calibrate here a little bit? I would propose that we move Agenda Item Eleven on the resolutions to the next meeting. And it may mean that.
Well, the challenge is that July, we were intentionally keeping that extremely short because a lot of people are going to be on the phone and it's going to be hard to have a lot of discussion. So, it was meant to be hires and AP orders and things.
I'm going to propose maybe that Martin and I go offline on the resolutions and come back with specific recommendations or, or we can solicit.
Yeah, I would be happy to sort of feed into that offline. My struggle a little bit with.
You say offline, just do some, some sharing through email?
Yeah, of ideas.
Of ideas.
And then we could decide, you know, obviously in public session, like what we're actually going to move forward.
Right.
But there's, I, I feel like we haven't really done anything on this and to sort of try to just brainstorm is not too helpful.
No, and I did, I did see a V S B A newsletter today that had the current resolutions in it and it had the process to submit new resolutions. So, I would propose maybe we send that out as a tickler to individual board members to think about what, what are the topics you might be interested in proposing a resolution on? And then we can kind of take it from there.
Fair.
Yeah, I'm struggling, I'm struggling to get really enthusiastic to spend a lot of time. So, I have to say, not to be rude, but I have to say, a lot of the resolutions that ended up getting passed last year were in direct opposition of what I would have liked to have seen.
Right.
So, I'm a little frustrated with that process. And so, the amount of time that we spend on it, I would like us to be realistic about how much time we should spend on it, frankly.
And that's probably a good message to also be very focused on anything we might choose to move forward.
Yeah.
Fair. How about item ten?
I think ten's pretty quick because you, I mean.
Is this the third?
This is the third and, and there was, it was specific to the surveys. It's highlighted in yellow. There was specifics under the evidence on page two of seven. Each year, again, we've added some clarity there that, you know, each year we conduct surveys related to different topics. It's not, this is not in addition. So, again, we've clarified that and then also a little clarification on three of seven. Those were, I think, that was the feedback that came back from the last meeting. Those were the only additional comments that came back from that. But again, it's your pleasure, whatever you wish to do.
Are people comfortable with doing that evaluation now? All right, so in regards to, and I guess the, the one piece of, or one comment we would make is we, I think we had this discussion at the last meeting of just a concern that two-point-one kind of migrates primarily around information gathering and security, things like that, rather than the topic of, as indicated, kind of the, the specific treatment of versus allowing conditions to occur. So, it may be one where we want to, at some point, revisit the, the specific policy itself.
Yes.
So, with that said, I'll go through the detailed policy first. Reasonable interpretation on policy, or detail policy one, elicit information for which there is no need. Reasonable interpretation?
Yes.
Adequate data?
Yes.
And in compliance?
Yes.
Thanks, Alex. Unless, if, Alex, if you just disagree on something, why don't you say? Because it's a little bit of an echo.
Okay.
Thank you.
I'll just put it back on you and if I have to say no to something, I will, but otherwise, yes.
Perfect, I'll give you a minute, otherwise. On detail policy two, fail to solicit appropriate input or obtain necessary information to fulfill the district's ends policy or comply with the district's policy limitations. Reasonable interpretation?
Yes.
Adequate data?
Yes.
In compliance?
Yes.
Detail policy three, use methods of collecting, reviewing, transmitting or storing student and family information that fail to protect against improper access to the material elicited. A reasonable interpretation?
Yes.
Adequate data?
Yes.
In compliance?
Yes.
Detail policy four, fail to operate facilities with appropriate accessibility and privacy. Reasonable interpretation?
Yes.
Adequate data?
Yes.
In compliance?
Yes.
Detail policy five, fail to establish with students and parents' guardians a clear understanding of what may and what may not be expected from the district. Reasonable interpretation?
Yes.
Adequate data?
Yes.
And in compliance?
Yes.
Detail policy six, fail to limit the use of live security video systems to crisis situations and the immediate need of administrators for safety information. Reasonable interpretation?
Yes.
Adequate data?
Yes.
In compliance?
Yes.
Detail policy seven, fail to limit the use of security video recordings to inquiries by the police about criminal investigations or by district or building administrators to ensure student, staff or community safety. Reasonable interpretation?
Yes.
Adequate data?
Yes.
In compliance?
Yes.
Detail policy eight, fail to inform students and parents' guardians of this policy or to provide a way to be heard for persons who believe they have not been accorded protections under this policy. Reasonable interpretation?
Yes.
Adequate data?
Yes.
And in compliance?
Yes.
So, by default, we, I will read the overall policy, two-point-one, with respect to interactions with students and parents' guardians or those applying to be students or parents' guardians. The, I'm sorry, that just sounded funny to me. The superintendent shall not cause or allow conditions, procedures or decisions that are inequitable, untimely, vague, undignified or unnecessarily intrusive. And by default, we have reasonable interpretation?
Yes.
Adequate data?
Yes.
And in compliance?
Yes.
Great, thank you.
I think we are done. Just a quick comment there, that sounded like those applying to be parents or guardians.
Yeah, you're right.
All right. Setting the agenda for the July eleventh meeting?
Yeah.
And as we mentioned, it sounds like we've got a few people by phone?
We will have, so item six, again, I, I did mention to a few folks that were in subcommittee work around contingency conversation, so it's on there, item number six. So, I'll have some supporting data that will go along with that, if in fact it needs, it needs to be acted on. So, you'll see some of that. The other, the other area that I might add here is some safety and security upgrades. So, keeping you mindful of safety and security upgrades, we're doing, we're working to do some double door entry transitions, similar to high school, middle school. So, you'll see, you'll see a list likely about what those will, what those are. And again, depending on where I'm at with year-end funding and forecasted for next year, John's been helping me on that to determine if in fact we can do some of those, some of those things. So, I'll have that upgrade in there as well. So, I'll add that to the agenda.
Anything else for July eleven?
Say again.
You'll send around a dial-in number or?
Uh, yes, we'll have a, we'll have a number for folks to call or you can let me know what number you would want me to call you at.
Okay.
I could, I can do a go-to meeting. I often don't do that. I usually just call you, those that can attend and pull you in on, on the conference call that way.
We, we need to make that available to the public, though, too, right?
We'll, we'll, we will, we'll hold the meeting here, but we'll make it so that everyone can be heard, yeah.
All right, why don't we table Agenda Item thirteen, future agenda items? We've covered that typically in the past. Agenda Item fourteen, to consider the minutes of the meetings of June sixth, eleventh and June fourteenth. Any additions or changes to the meetings of June sixth, minutes of meeting June sixth? Any additions or changes to the minutes of the meeting occurring on June eleventh? Alex, just speak up if you need to. And any changes to the minutes of the June fourteenth meeting?
Nope.
All right, seeing none, those are approved by consensus. And we'll move on to the consent agenda. Could I, I'd like to request that Gary's position be taken off and discussed further?
Okay, talked about, mm-hmm. So, with that said, you need to add the retirement of Kathy Kay, which was a revision. And at your place, you have a letter from Kathy that basically was received on the eighteenth. Again, I think this has not been an easy decision. She is an individual who's been with us forty-five years in, in, in this particular district as a language arts and has affected many, many of our children. Yes, thank you, Kathy. Yeah. And so, she, again, dedicated classroom teacher who's, was at our graduation, has made it, you know, an ongoing to just be available to our students throughout their journey. I just want to make note of that. It's my hope that you'll honor the, the request. It does come late. That said, I would like that to be honored if, if, could. That's one area that I wanted to identify on the consent agenda. Probably battery.
All right, any other further questions on hires or bids? As well as the, we have the schools out, uncollected debt on the consent agenda as well. All right, seeing none, those are all approved by consensus. And I would also echo David's comments about Kathy Kay. She was my daughter's teacher many years ago and just an excellent educator and incredible number of years of service to the district. So, thank you and on behalf of the board, I will send some indication of our thanks for all her service. All right, if we could have a discussion on the Director of Operations and Financial Management. Can you kind of walk us through the selection process there and the roles and expectations?
Sure, so, selection process, similar to our typical pattern. We post up in the position, solicit the applicants through our school spring process, select a committee that has some representation of our district across, across our schools and our, our work. And so, we did that, a committee was formed. Interviews were held with the committee, with the administrators and with myself. And then a recommendation came to me from, you know, or information came to me from them and a selection was made after it was narrowed to two, actually three, to two. And I made the, the recommendation of Gary and I'm making that recommendation to you. The second part of your question, I think, Elizabeth, is the determination of the position?
It's really around the, the roles and responsibilities. Because I couldn't help but notice that there's not a lot of direct finance background. So, I know you've restructured that role, so maybe you could just take a minute and speak to that.
So, one of the things, obviously, currently existing in the state of Vermont is pretty significant transitions that are happening with business managers and the inability to hang on to business managers across the state. There's a pretty significant shortage. I attribute that to looking at essential functions of the duties associated with that particular position. So, I felt it was important to look at, what I would say, just some additional distributed leadership. So, currently under the structure was to, to take on some additional responsibilities of the Director of Operations and Finance and then to spread some distributed leadership currently with the Physical Coordinator to add some additional responsibilities, but take some of those, some of those particular responsibilities that she's had or that position has had and move those to others. So, this particular position will still, would oversee financial, but would oversee that entire department and would have some direct responsibilities to operations. So, again, with the Physical Coordinator letting go of some things and taking on some additional, like monitoring reports, negotiation support, our Staff Accountant taking on additional responsibilities to oversee payroll and benefits, which is, which is a transition from the Physical Coordinator. And then, you know, again, looking at opportunities for them to, to be successful in that way. So, again, important to the, the function and the operation of the district is looking at how those all interconnect, nutrition, facilities, business office, food service, schools out. Those all have a critical component to working together. So, I think that this will allow for us to retain and hold on to and, and not see transition and have some distributed leadership and opportunities for individuals within that department to be successful.
Do, do we anticipate the need to have to add finance resources?
I think we'll, we'll have capacity to continue to support that. I think as we continue to look at analytical work in more in-depth, that may be an area that we will need to talk more about either through a, a variety of functions, albeit negotiations in any one of our typical areas, groups, to other data that you may want. Again, part of one of the things I need to be careful of is that I, that for positions that are currently, positions in the district, they have job duties that are close to a full-time work week. I have to be careful that I don't add those additional duties that bring it to a, I'm going to say, a sixty-hour, seventy-hour work week and creates a lot of turnover. So, again, I think this model will allow us to have that distributed leadership, allow some people to grow within the organization and to look at the interconnectedness of, of operations as it's associated to that, to those business functions, so.
Can I just ask a couple of questions? Because having worked on the committee, it wasn't clear to us how the idea of adding more responsibilities or a greater variety of responsibilities would translate into keeping someone longer term. So, what it sort of sounds like is we've got this really complex, very busy job that's more than forty hours a week, really. And we're having trouble, everybody across the state has this kind of job and it's hard to keep people in that role. And so, the way to solve that is to add more responsibilities.
Well, first, it's not really, so it's, it's, it's distributing the, the responsibilities across the organization. So, for instance, the Business Manager of current has been responsible for all of the financial reporting, including all of the monitoring, including all of the negotiations. So, just kind of envision that.
Right.
So, if you're thinking about just that and then taking on operations, I don't disagree with you that it's overloading.
Right.
But in other facets of that particular organization, there's opportunities to offload some responsibilities to more like capacity and to allow a more focused effort on specific things that feed just the finance, with the hopes that it does give some people to the opportunity to move, move around.
And I guess my question then, my follow-up question to that is, it's still a little unclear to me what the reorganization of the business office looks like. Because I only have interaction with a handful of people in that office and, you know, those, well, not even a handful, two or three people, really, in that office. And, and those folks seem to be completely overloaded right now, given everything that's happened at the state level and that's happened with our healthcare. And they have a lot of H R function, really, too. And my question is, if we're expecting some of those people to step too. And my question is, if we're expecting some of those people to step up, to take on more responsibility for things like bonding, and things like, you know, the actual finance function, what are we doing with those responsibilities? And is that going to lead to a necessity to add capacity at a human resource level, or some other part of the organization to free them up, because we can't just add to their plates either? Or is there a capacity that I'm just not seeing because I'm not part of the business office? Are there enough part-time people that are willing or have capacity to, to grow their responsibilities without adding a lot of additional resource?
Yeah. So a couple of things in addition to that. It's not just adding. We've also looked at distributed both in other organizations, right? So in our office, MORA, as a result of the continued increasing of what we'll, what we'll say is just leaves, family medical leave, and all of the particular compliances that we need to pay attention, that has transferred from payroll to MORA, including workers' comp. So there's an offloading of responsibilities that have happened, including offloading responsibilities onto Human Resource Director Karen Dancher, right, on some of those functions that fall better within that particular area than where they have rested in the business office solely. Do I think that we have all of the resources that we need to continue in the, I don't think so. Again, part of that we'll look at more financial analytical work probably we'll need, or those areas, we may need some additional resources. But if I didn't make a, you know, some reorganization for this current upcoming year, I think I risk few areas that we're going to just absolutely go, you know, be difficult to achieve. So redistributing throughout the organism, the business office, offloading some of those responsibilities into human resources, we've hired an additional person in our office to do the HR support work specific to leaves. That was in the budget. And so I think that some of that rearrangement, along with the interconnectedness of, of the operations, which often have yielded, like, more work to undo versus to support and do, transportation, nutrition services, facilities, schools out, et cetera. And so I think that it's, this is looking at like responsibilities. Again, I mean, you're, you're asking me to look at, you know, the, the ability to be flexible in our organization with our current resources and budgeted, at the same time being mindful of the, of the people in the positions and those that are trying to do the work. And I, if I kept it the same, I think I'd be looking at this on a year-over-year basis, and not getting the services that we need to support students, school boards, administrators, and teachers. And you know when transitions happen regularly, that's a big hole that, that is hard to fill, hard to train up, hard to inform, hard to create relationships. So it's my hope that this will, this, by hiring Gary, who has strong operational view, but we have individuals currently in the business office that have strong financial view, may need some up-training in a few areas, and, and we're willing to make sure that that works. So that's, that's where we're at.
Yeah, I mean, Gary's background is great, and it, you know, from, from a perspective of, I think he'll be a great addition to the organization. You know, I think anybody coming in with the responsibility of oversight for the diversity of operations and financial management, you know, I hope he'll challenge himself to kind of, particularly with, with everything going on around state and education funding, it'll be drinking through a fire hose on that component of it. And he's got good people to rely on.
That's right.
But that's, that's a big assignment.
Yes, I, I would agree. And I know, I don't want to sound skeptical at all, because as I said, I was on the hiring committee. And I, I take a lot of comfort in the fact that he's been sitting on a school board, and, and he is extremely well-versed in what's going on at the state level. Has he had to do it from a business manager's perspective before? No. But he has had some budgeting experience, although he, he himself sort of said, "It was great." You know, when I was in the military, you know, my budgeting experience was, we got told what our budget is, and then you get to go spend it. There's, and there was clarity, and there was sort of direction, and we figured out how to work best within that budget. So it's different from trying to build a bottom-up budget from, you know, and he admits that, and he understands that. I guess my question was just, and, and the committee had sort of asked ourselves, as, as we were thinking through it, was, you know, does he need some resource or training at all? Or do you, are you confident that he can pick up the, because it's, because I said, it's still unclear to me exactly which things are going to be on his plate versus someone else's plate. So you may be confident...
Those job descriptions have been done, and, and I think to your concerns, strength and weaknesses, you know, we all, we all have those. I think that this, this particular decision allows for the strengths within the organization to support one another and develop redundancy where we need them. Certain people can grow into those, I do think, and actually, you know, not all business managers do bonding every day, you know?
Right.
So that's not in their, in their forte. Happens to be in John's, or long-term investments. We have investment firms, but we need to be able to do the checks and balances. So we may need to hire, you know, some folks to provide some professional development for the Emmetys and the Garrys to be able to, what, what do you notice here? What would be your recommendation? And to be able to advise each other to do that on a going-forward basis. So I, I do think that this, the hiring of Gary helps to recognize the resources and the expertise that we have, and build upon kind of a sustainable move-forward direction that will allow our budget also to inform the future, so.
Any other questions or comments? And do we need to?
No, it's on the consent agenda, but I think as you took it off now, you probably knew need to, you need to act on his, or some recommendation to approve it now that you took him off.
So I will look to, and Alex, if, if you're in agreement by consensus, we will approve the hire of Gary and the Director of Operations and Financial Management?
Quick question, Elizabeth. Is this a one-year contract?
Oh, no.
This is a two-year, with, with caveats into the, into the first year related to performance.
Okay.
Yeah.
Can we, is it possible to go through the caveats, please?
It's, performance, it's performance, it's performance review, similar to what happens around, you know, any of our other staff, around successful completion of his job description duties.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Agenda Item 16, AP orders 49 and 50. Any questions, comments? All right, moving on to Agenda Item 17. We have an AP order checked to the Howard Center in the amount of $94,565.01. Do I have a motion to approve?
Moved.
Second?
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Alex?
Aye.
Okay. And do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Alex.
Aye.
Thanks.